Welcome to the Monday, March 11, 2024, meeting of the Concord City Council. I would just like to note that devices are available to help those who have difficulty in hearing. These devices use a transmitter and headphones and allow for an individual to personally adjust the volume to their needs. A device can be obtained at the Concord TV booth in the back of the council chambers. That's right back there in the corner where the man is waving his hand. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Mayor Chiumlin.
Present.
Counselor Fennessy.
Present.
Counselor Fu.
Present.
Counselor Brady Sexton.
Here.
Counselor Horn.
Here.
Counselor Keach.
Here.
Counselor Credit.
Here.
Counselor Kurtz.
Here.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Here.
Counselor McNamara.
Here.
Counselor Schlosser.
Here.
Counselor Schultz.
Here.
Counselor Seku.
Excused.
And Counselor Todd.
Here.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of our February 12, 2024, City Council meeting?
Still approved.
Moved and seconded? All right, Counselor?
Your Honor, I have a correction to the minutes.
Okay.
On page 10, our unfinished business, item number 44, it states that it was unanimous vote. Actually, Counselor Fennessy voted no on the resolution authorizing city manager to enter into a license agreement with Brady Sullivan.
This is true. All right. Counselor Fennessy indicates that is correct.
That is correct. I think that's been duly noted by the city clerk.
Yes.
Are we ready for the vote? All those in favor of approving the minutes as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no, ayes have it, the minutes are adopted. Is there anyone here who's here to speak to a resolution for a ceasefire in Gaza? Okay, I have to notify you that that is not on our agenda, nor do we have a public comment section in our meeting structure. You're very welcome to stay and be here for the remainder of the meeting, but we will not be speaking or taking testimony on that topic. All right, thank you. All right, we now have a presentation by the Friends Program. Yeah?
Thank you, my name is Laura Miller. I work for the Friends Program doing development and community relations.
I'm Glenda Leon, I'm the Director for Emergency Housing at the Friends Program.
Terrific, thank you.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for inviting us to join the meeting tonight and to all the esteemed council and city employees who are in the room, and thank you most of all for our amazing Concord community for supporting the Friends Program for nearly 50 years. My name is Laura Miller, and I have the privilege of working on community relations and development for the Friends Program. And I would also like to introduce Glenda Leon, our Director of Emergency Housing. The Friends Program, as many of you know, was founded in 1975 to serve youth in Merrimack County who needed the support of a caring adult mentor to help them stay out of the court system. And we've grown a lot since those early days, and now we serve over 1,000 young people across the state through both that local youth mentoring program and our AmeriCorps Senior Classroom Grandparent Program. Additionally, our RSVP program works with 58 agencies to meet community needs through volunteer service, free exercise programs, caregiver's program provides rides for medical appointments, shopping, and friendly callers to frail seniors in the Concord community. Put simply, it's our mission to build positive connections and solutions for at-risk youth, families, and seniors, and it's families we came here to speak to about tonight. Our emergency housing program has increased access to rural housing for families since 1980. In 1986, we purchased our shelter building on Thompson Street, and after converting the original barn to a third apartment unit, we've been sheltering up to eight families at a time since then. Families typically stay in the shelter for about four months. That depends both on the availability of housing and, you know, varied reasons because families become unhoused for a lot of variety of reasons, and the interventions are complex. You all know that affordable housing is an incredible difficult problem in New Hampshire, but the rent in New Hampshire has increased 22% in the last three years, and according to Concord Hospital's Community Needs Survey, now exceeds more than 30% of family income for greater than 45% of the families in Merrimack County. 23% of families live under the poverty level in Merrimack County. That's 23% of our families that don't know where their next rent payment might come from. In fact, it's estimated that a single-parent, single-child household needs about $70,000 to meet their basic needs, and the average single mom in Merrimack County makes about $27,000. I think we can all agree that more affordable housing is critical to building a strong community as well as jobs that pay a living wage. Emergency Services offers individualized support to each family, starting with our very first phone call. Friends Program staff work to find referrals for each person who calls, whether or not they're eligible for our program. If the family does enter our shelter, it's our first priority that they feel safe, that they have food and basic supplies, and that they have a chance to exhale and rest. Shortly after they settle in, staff begins to develop a trauma-informed, individualized care plan. Each family needs something different. Some might need health care, some might need recovery or mental health services, some might need a job, childcare, or simply transportation to make their ends meet. While housing applications are completed with staff, the families work on developing their independent living and their advocacy skills, and then when housing is available, they're ready for long-term success. In fact, in the last three years, we've achieved 100% housing success. 100% of the families that have exited our shelter have maintained their housing. So families leave Thompson Street, but that doesn't mean they're on their own again. Our Continuum of Care program offers at least six months of follow-up and access to resources, and when a family reaches out, they can do that forever. They're, as long as they need help, we'll be there to help them. We help those families become part of the Concord community. And our approach works. It's cost-effective and provides long-term results. But you all know, the need is great, so emergency housing is growing again. We're more than halfway through a significant renovation that will increase the capacity and the efficiency of our program. The renovation adds another bedroom, so we can house an additional family, and it makes countless changes that make those space more functional and more trauma-informed. We are hard at work to add families to our continuum of care or after-care system as well, and coordinate with other agencies serving those at imminent risk of homelessness, working together to prevent homelessness. Emergency Housing Services provides so much more than shelter. We're building stronger families and a stronger community. They are more resilient when they leave Thompson Street, they become employees, taxpayers, students, teachers, volunteers, voters, and community members. We'd like to thank you all and the Concord community for your continued partnership and support, and now I'd like to turn it over to Glenda to answer all of your questions about emergency housing operations and their vision for the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions for Friends, the Friends Program?
Thank you. Thank you both for coming tonight, it's good to see you again. I had the pleasure of getting to visit the Thompson Street facility. Counselor Schlosser, Counselor Horn, Counselor Brown, the mayor.
Counselor Todd?
Counselor Todd, sorry. I was like, I knew there was one more person, but I couldn't remember who it was. What can the community do to assist your program? What do you, what's the biggest thing that, that members of the community right now who want to help out could do for your program?
Well, aside from help with the renovation, so we need, you know, hands-on with the building, with painting, you know, the building needs a fresh coat of paint, some bedrooms need to be updated, dressers, bureaus, you know, typical things like that. Aside from that, my biggest goal is to be able to help our families get into their apartments in a very easy way. So if we could have funding to be able to do that for our families, to help them pay the application fees, the security deposits, those first month's rent, moving fees, a U-Haul, maybe they just need to get an air mattress until they can get other things, that would be really great.
Thank you.
I think supporting affordable housing in the community is really critical as well, and all the projects that are coming online are very exciting, but when you look at, there's not a whole lot of affordable housing in there, so as much as the community can support those initiatives, I mean, that makes a world of difference, because right now we have less than 1% vacancy rate, and for two bedrooms, it's even lower.
I was going to ask you what challenges you face finding open housing that you can move your families into.
Yes, luckily, we have really good connections in the Concord community with Concord Housing, Royal Gardens, and things like that, but even within those apartments, it's such, you know, such a high need that the waiting lists are getting longer and longer, so our families are having to stay in our shelter, you know, for a longer extended period of time.
So would you like to hear from willing landlords who have properties maybe that are opening up that might be suitable?
Yes, yes.
Yes, willing landlords are a blessing, and we, we do have a reputation of supporting the families after they leave our shelter that has, you know, has, people have realized that they're not just taking a big leap of faith with these families, that they have support.
Yes.
Thank you for the presentation, and I got the tour, and it's a great program. Could you estimate the percent of need that your program meets? Because it's a first-come, first-served, so people may call, and at times, there may not be a space available. Do you have a sense of what fraction of the need for family, emergency shelter housing, your current program needs? Any estimate of that?
Probably not a percentage, but I can tell you a number. We've served, last year, we served over 123 individuals, and that's adults and children combined.
Counselor Schlosser.
So, but, but do we keep track of the clients you cannot serve?
Yes, yes.
That's.
I do keep track of that, I don't have a current number, but I do keep track of it, yes.
Thank you. Counselor?
For individuals who may have time or items to donate, as per the list, what's the best point of contact?
You can call our shelter directly, you can go on our website, we have an Amazon wishlist as well, too.
Great, thank you.
Great, well, thank you so much for this presentation, I'm sorry, Counselor Todd.
Thank you, Your Honor. As part of my superhero powers, I blend into the background. Counselor Fennessy didn't remember I was there.
He's an Agaheim bear.
That's right. Actually, it just, I wanted to just pick up on something you just mentioned, which was, last year, you said you served 123 families. Is that, in your recollection, a typical year, or has that number grown?
It has grown. I think as, as the need continues to rise as for housing, then the more families we tend to serve.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Counselor Credit.
Thank you, Your Honor, I, I don't have a question, but rather a comment. We have a subcommittee of our Public Safety Committee that is looking specifically at homelessness and trying to gather data that is specific to Concord and not the county.
Okay.
The county numbers are very helpful, but it doesn't give us really feet on the ground today what we have and what we need to be addressing in our community, so we're hopeful to be able to partner with the Friends Program to gather that information, and I believe that that's what Counselor Schlosser was asking a little bit about in your question. Yes, no?
No.
Oh, okay. But I would still love to do that, yes.
Awesome, thank you.
I would still love to do that, so please, yes.
Thank you so much.
One of the trickiest things about tracking the need is that so many families are sleeping on couches, or in some other way, they are sheltered, they might be not tracked specifically, so finding that data will be.
A challenge.
A challenge, but also incredibly important.
Yes.
We'd love to help with that.
Thank you so much.
Counselor Schultz.
And I would assume a significant portion based, you mentioned employed, many of the adults will be employed, if they're not seniors and retired, I would imagine, given the stagnant wages that we have and defaulting to a $7.25 minimum wage as we do, a number of the adults in your program that aren't retired must also be full-time workers.
Yes, and then on top of that, they have to pay for childcare, because a lot of them have children, and again, it's, it's a vicious cycle, so they, they have to work, they have to pay for childcare. If they don't work, they don't get the childcare, so it's, yeah.
I think that's a myth that people have about who is in this situation, somehow they're not contributing in some way, and yet, the term working poor is unfortunate and true, yes.
Right, well, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you all for having us.
I just want to reiterate that you are the only family shelter in, in Concord, and just doing an invaluable service. As Counselor Fennessy mentioned, it was a great tour, we really appreciate the time you spent with the group that we brought over, and it was great to see the work that you do and are continuing to do, so thank you very much for this update.
Can I ask one quick question?
You may.
How many family shelters are in the county?
We are the only in Merrimack County.
I think it's one, right? Okay, that's what I thought, so you're also.
Even better.
I'm like, maybe two, but we are the only one.
We are the low, the only low-barrier shelter, meaning the only criteria for entering our shelter is that you have 21% custody of a child.
Yes.
Super, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there are other counselors who would like to take the tour who weren't able to, just give us a call, and we'll be happy to.
And I have your contact information.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now turn, we'll now turn to the consent calendar. I'll note that item 23 has been pulled from the consent calendar by moi, and Counselor Todd is recusing himself from voting on item 27 due to a conflict of interest. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Approval?
Moved and seconded? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no, ayes have it, thank you very much. We'll now turn to our public hearings. Madam Clerk?
The first item is a resolution adopting a community power program for electricity supply in Concord and authorizing the city to join the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire.
So, Your Honor, members of the City Council, the, you have, you have a seven-page report in front of you, there'll be a presentation briefly, the, and really what you're going to be looking at tonight is a question about the adoption of the Community Power Program for the electric supply, the authorization to join the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire, and enter into the, and the required legal documents associated with that, and authorizing the Energy and Environment Advisory Committee, which representatives are, some of them are here this evening, prepare and submit a municipal aggregation plan to the Public Utilities Commission, and the plan will include provisions for an octa-program. Additionally, the plan will set the initial default rate for the renewable energy supply at 30% for renewable energy, with the option of change in the future, the idea would be if the rate could allow it to get, to go higher as a part of the renewable energy percentage, to establish two appointees to serve as the city's representative on the coalition if you decide to move forward. The, in March, you recall, in March of 2023, the Fiscal Policy Advisory Committee recommended City Council direct the advisory committee to create the electrical aggregation plan for the city of Concord, and to set draft plan to present to the City Council for review and approval. Subcommittee members, and the members of the advisory committee for the community research and analyze community power plans, alternatives over a six-month period, and they're going to, tonight, they'll go over many of these, the information that they found, they did a lot of due diligence, as did the Fiscal Policy Advisory Committee, and then you'll have recommendations at the end, but I won't, I'll just jump in at the end after they do the presentation, so we don't repeat a lot of things, but you have a very well-versed group up here, ready to present, so with that, turn it over to them.
Thank you, I'll now declare the public hearing open. Please identify yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the record, my name is Rob Werner, I am the Chair of the Concord Energy and Environment Advisory Committee, and as the manager noted, our committee had diligently analyzed community power approaches over the last several months, and the recommendation to join the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire is really the product of all that work and the product of the original directive from the City Council in March to carry forward this work, so we're here tonight to provide a little more detail, have an opportunity for counselors to ask questions, and to learn a bit more about why we think it's very important for the city to, to join the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire and create a community power program. I think that we have an opportunity to really improve the lives of our citizens by taking this step, and that's one of the reasons why we want to do it. It's not only in terms of our renewable energy goals, recall that we have a 100% renewable energy goal in the city that this council has endorsed, and really, by pursuing community power program, we would be able to take a large step towards meeting those goals in the future. In fact, I think unless we were to adopt such approach, it would be very difficult to meet that as a community. I want to thank a couple of people that have been really key to staffing our work and helping us, primarily Beth Fenstermacher, terrific advocate for our work, and a real credit to the city in terms of her staffing of our committee, and certainly the city's energy consultant, Beth Greenblatt, was very key in terms of providing input and perspective along the way, so. But I'd like to do now is to turn it over to Chuck Willing and Joe Kwasnick to go through some of the specific recommendations that we've made as a committee, and, and then go from there and answer questions.
Now my turn. Thanks, Rob. My name is Joe Kwasnick, I'm a citizen of Concord, live on Pleasant Street, and I have been working as advisor to the Subcommittee making these recommendations. My background is as a 30-year veteran of National Grid in the energy sector, and nine years on the New Hampshire Electric Co-op Board, including three years as chairman, so I come with a little bit of energy background and intense interest in seeing this happen within Concord, City of Concord. We've brought three questions before the, the council, and I'll be answering the first two. The first question was, we're recommending that we do pursue community power, and why do we want to do that? Well, we think that community power will save each of the residential electric customers in Concord money. We've seen anywhere from $200 to $300 to $400 a year savings, depending on certainly the electric use of that particular customer, but we're seeing demonstrated savings with New Hampshire in the, it's been about one year since the program went live, and we're seeing real savings for folks that are doing that, that work within New Hampshire. We also, as Rob mentioned, for us to meet our renewable energy goal, both for transportation and energy use within the city, this is a key element that will help us and enable us to do that. Without the community power, and we'll explain a little more later, without community power, we'll be hard-pressed to meet these goals, so it's going to be an essential part to, to make that happen for us. It also will give Concord a lot more control over the energy supply. Right now, 90%. supply. Right now, 90% more percent of our electric customers in Concord are under the default energy service from either Eversource or from Unitil. And though that energy is procured once every six months, the utilities go out and ask for bids, whatever's on the market, they take the lowest bid, and that's our energy supply for six months. And it's not a really very smart way to go about basically procuring electricity. Also, we think there's another reason why, in that to meet the energy goals, we've talked a lot about renewable energy. But another, called the flip side of renewable energy, is making sure we control the demand of our electricity usage within the city, whether it's through energy efficiency, whether it's demand management, battery storage, a whole plethora of various technologies that will be essential to try to reduce our load at the same time that we're increasing our energy, our renewable energy. So, working with, in community power, we will be able to actually have the financial abilities to do renewable energy and demand-side management, which is a key part of what we need to do here in Concord. The second question is, we recommend that we do, the program is an opt-out program, and when you look at community power, you have either an opt-out or an opt-in. An opt-in is a program, it was actually the way the community power was initially enacted by the legislature, and it requires people to actually sign up for it, to opt-in. And we found that over the years that there was very few people interested in opting in. We're kind of lethargic community in terms of doing those things. So, for many years, it was, this program was on the books, and we were never really very active. And when you think about it, when you think about it, opt-in is not, not, it's just something Americans don't do. So it didn't work very well. But back in, back in 2019, the legislature actually changed the legislation to give us the option of opt-out or opt-in. Now, opt-out is, is where people in this program, if the community of Concord decides to go with community power, all of the people that are on current default service with Unitil or Eversource will be in the program. But they have the ability to opt-out. They can go, they have a number, a few options other than the community power. They can go back to the default service with their utility, or they can actually secure energy through independent power producers. And that, that option is currently available to people today in Concord. So we're recommending opt-out because, one, it's, it's very, it's, it's the way the program works today under default energy service. Everyone, over 90% of our retail customers in Concord, we didn't decide to be served by the utilities, so we're kind of an opt-out. You can still opt-out to go with the independent supplier. So, we, again, recommend opt-out, and residential customers still have a choice. They can go back with the utility, they can go with independent power producers, and under the opt-out program, they will have actually four choices on the, the quality of the utility of the electricity that they would want. Anywhere from standard renewable energy, which is about 24% of the state law, and ramping all the way up to 100% renewable energy. So there's a lot more choices under community power than that people have currently. So, we're, again, recommending that we do participate in the program and that we go in an opt-out version of the program. Thank you. So at this point, I'd like to, Chuck, introduce Chuck Willard.
Yeah. I'm Chuck Willing. I'm a member of the Concord Energy and Environment Advisory Committee and a resident of Concord. Our third recommendation is that Concord should implement its program by joining the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire. Our committee unanimously chose that model, and these are the reasons why. Fundamentally, it's a question of trust. Assuming the role of the default energy supplier for the community is an important decision, committee members ask themselves, who do we trust in this role? We trust the nonprofit with a mission to serve its members and its, and their residents. We studied the governance documents of the coalition and observed the coalition in action by attending board of directors meetings and committee meetings. We concluded that the coalition is governed well, staff are first-rate, and the board functions as a board should. We observe smart people operating in a governance structure designed to produce sound decisions. Everything about the coalition is transparent. It is subject to the right to know law. Any member of the public can attend or view its meetings, and we have done that. You can see what decisions are made and why they are made. You can see how revenues are applied to supply, administration, and reserves. The coalition is designed to offer a stable program going forward. In particular, its joint reserves ensure continuity of operation and rate stability in the event of unforeseen circumstances, and enable the coalition to build its credit with contract counterparties and financial parties, which in turn enables it to lower its operating costs in the long term. The coalition has a track record of success. It has delivered good service at good rates for 10 months. The coalition can do this because it procures energy supply continuously, which enables it to take advantage of energy market opportunities whenever they arise. While the coalition can't guarantee that it will beat the utility rates in every single rate period in the future, because we can't be certain of future rates, the coalition seems positioned to offer the lowest rates a high percentage of the time because of how it procures power. The coalition's granite basic rate, its lowest rate, has beaten the three regulated utility residential rates in all three rate periods in its history, under very different market conditions. Three of the coalition's offerings, all the way up to 50% renewable energy, have beaten Unitil's residential rate in all three rate periods. The coalition offers program continuity. Under the coalition model, the coalition will continue to be the provider of community power services for our program going forward, as long as we want it to do so, not just for a term of years. The coalition is future-oriented and has innovation in its DNA. They are anticipating potential new offerings like time-of-use rates and smart meters, the kinds of things that Joe was alluding to. We will need these innovations in order to achieve our goals in a cost-effective way. The coalition includes some of the best energy mines in the state and offers the opportunity for collaboration, which we will need in order to achieve our goals and have a successful program. Finally, the coalition advocates for its members in the legislature and before state agencies, giving communities a voice on community power issues. Communities need an advocate in the legislature to push back on proposals that threaten community power programs and advance proposals that would help them. And we have a fourth recommendation that I want to talk about briefly. We, we are making a recommendation regarding our community power programs, programs default offering. We need to have a default offering under our program that will apply for anyone who does not choose another offering. Within the coalition program, the default offering can be either the state renewable portfolio standard requirement, which is 30, currently 30, 24.3% renewable energy. The coalition calls that rate granite basic, or 33% renewable energy, what the coalition calls granite plus. The committee unanimously recommends 33% renewable energy granite plus as the default offering, because it allows Concord to take an immediate step forward toward achieving our renewable energy goals. As Joe said, any customer can choose to opt-out of community power entirely, or opt-down from granite plus to granite basic, or opt-up to 50% or 100% renewable energy. That concludes our committee's portion of the presentation, and we will now turn it over to Brian Kalman and, from the coalition, to give you some basic information about the coalition and how it operates.
Hello, everybody. Thank you, Joe. Thanks for having me down here tonight. I appreciate it. It's good to see you, counsel. And I wanted to start off, I was asked to come down from the council to just walk through and give you kind of an overview of how CPCNH works, but I think you've already been pretty well-served in that. I've looked at the documents that have been forwarded to everybody and read through them, and I'm actually going to borrow one of them, if that's okay, and use it on some of our other committees. There's a good comparison document in there. I like starting off with this picture, and I will try to keep this brief, because I know you've got some other things to be doing. I do like this picture. This, to me, is what community power looks like. It's a lot of individuals that have come together, trying to find a better way forward for their communities, and that's what it looks like, and that's how it works. Here's a picture of the great state of New Hampshire, and this is just showing our coalition membership today. And the point of this picture is to show how quickly it has grown from when it started in, when it, we actually started serving folks in April. We've now grown to 56 individual members, including two entire counties. That's representing roughly 30% of the population of New Hampshire, and that's from starting in April of 2023. We now have 28 communities live as of this month. We just, it was very exciting for us. We just launched another wave of folks that are now taking community power, serving 120,000 customers with over $9 million, which is real money in the first year's savings. And that's customer savings, directly to customers. This actually should say that we're the second-largest default service utility now, or default service provider, I should say. We're larger than Unitil. We're serving more folks than Unitil, serving more folks than Liberty, and now serving more folks than New Hampshire Electric Cooperative as well. Now, I said we had 56 members. The remaining members are expected to launch sometime in 2024, maybe early 2025. This is what makes community power work. We talked a little bit about governance earlier. We have a truly fantastic board with a great deal of talent, and they've volunteered that talent to help move this organization forward. The pictures you see on the left there, that's a 20, 20-member board. Each of those folks and others as well, within the, within the communities, also spend a great deal of time on board committees. I shouldn't say a great deal of time. They're spending as much time as needed on these committees to make things move forward efficiently. Four staff members, we're growing, we're hiring two more. Hopefully that will be six within 30 days here or so. And then, while that's a small staff, at any given time, there's probably 20 or so folks that are working on coalition business. We've surrounded ourselves with top-notch contractors to help make sure that we're delivering the best services we can. Some of these names may be familiar to you. This chart just helps to show where have the, we've talked about the rates so far, gave an example of it, and we're just using one, one community exeter. That, that community's seen 1.4 million in customer savings and 600, little over $600,000 as share of joint reserves. Add those together, that's roughly $2 million worth of benefits for those community, that community. On average, savings have ranged from about $15 to $16 per month. And the chart itself is just, it's, the left-hand side is cents per kilowatt hour, and then you have time on the bottom. And that, it shows three different rates that Chuck was talking about earlier, how they've dropped, and Unitil is on there. Eversource looks similar, I just didn't put it on there. I believe Concord's primarily Unitil. I was asked to talk through a little bit on the reserves policy. What does that look like? And we tried to put a picture together to kind of show what that really is. There's three kind of bars on the right-hand side there. In that bar, it shows that we've got, this is a stack. We have rough, most of what we're doing is to recover our energy costs. That's what we're, we're passing through to the members. There is some operating costs in order to pay staff and pay those contractors that you saw earlier. And then there's some net revenue, which we call as reserves, and Chuck had talked a little bit about that as well. And then there's that big empty box, and that big empty box is just bringing you up to the, the full value on the right, which is Unitil's rate at 10.7 cents. So the difference between the 10.7 cents and the 8.1 cents, we're calling that customer savings, because that means that's lower cost to the customers. Now, we accrue these costs, and we keep track of those for each individual member. And for the most part, when you think about reserves, it's total revenues that come in the door minus total costs that go out the door, and what's left are the reserves. And we use those reserves to help us, when we move forward, if, if there's ever an issue, when it comes to a particular rate, which we don't expect, we have those reserves, we have some cash that we could use to, to do that, to smooth that out. The other element that is really important for us is to try to, as we're growing, what we're trying to do is build up enough reserves so that we can actually contract directly with providers rather than using others, which includes a financing, a finance charge. So, once we have enough reserves to do that, we can actually keep our costs lower going forward. And we do track those, as I've talked about here. And then there's a policy, the policy targets help kind of explain that, like, so what is the right amount of reserves to collect? And we've used just regular industry standards of when we were being set up, what are best practices, and we put, we put a target of 120 days, roughly four months of operating reserves. And what that means is that's, that's fully four months of being able to pay as if no revenue was coming in at all. We have a max target of 180. I wouldn't think of that as a max. That's considered a cap. If you really would never have more reserves than that, that'll go straight into something called discretionary reserves. It's a good, good policy design, so you know for sure that reserves will never go above that. And in order to, to try to make sure that you continue to stay on track to get to 120 days, there's a minimum target as well. Now, this is just an illustrated, an illustrative timeline that Concord could follow if, if you wanted to, but in many of the communities that we go to, there's a process in voting and getting things moving, but you want to know what time, when do you actually see benefits that get to the customers? And we put this together, saying if we, if we were able to move relatively quickly, customers could start seeing savings in September of this year. What does it look like for the customers? There's a, there's a notification requirement that goes out. Here's a picture of what it looked like in Nashville. This is their letter. Everyone gets the opportunity, at least 30 days out, to see what's hap, when is their, when are their new rates going to be coming in? And if they're not interested in continuing with those rates, they can opt-out. Or, as we talked about earlier, they have the opportunity to make a choice to move up to higher renewable content product of clean 50 or clean 100 or granite plus, depending on what you wanted to do. Now, I've given you kind of a high-level view of CPCNH. If there are additional questions and more detailed questions that you didn't get answered in the materials that were sent to you before, I'm here to answer those.
Any questions, Counsel Fantasy?
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming down and doing the presentation for us. One thing, I think it was just on the last slide that was up there, one of the questions I've received from people is, if they don't, if they want to opt-out, who are they going to contact and how is that going to work? And I think it's right up there on the screen.
That's right. There's a phone number that you can do, use, and there's also, you can mail it in. I would recommend using the phone number or going to the website or the email address.
Counsel Kurtz.
Follow-up to that question. And what is the period of time in which an individual could opt-out, for example? Could they opt-out any given month? Should they be unsatisfied?
Yep. An individual can opt-out at any time.
Thank you.
Counsel Keach.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just had a couple of questions specific to the, the reserves. That, that area concerns me a little bit, and I've shared some of the questions with you folks, and you've been great in responding to me, but I thought I'd ask them in a public forum for the benefit of the public. So, you, you talked about a reserve, and you had targets, and then you kind of touched touched on a, I think you referred to it as a discretionary reserve that would be beyond that. What happens to the discretionary reserve? How are those monies spent? And I'll ask all the questions at once, just to save time. And are those reserves segregated or are they combined throughout all communities within the co-op? And the third question, if you don't mind, in the interest of time. If they are, if they are commingled, would Concord have a, a weighted vote, assuming we would probably have a greater proportion of those reserves than some smaller communities, for instance?
Okay. I think I got them all written down.
Sorry about that.
And just a clarification, we're not the cooperative, we are the coalition.
Coalition.
Very, very similar kind of governance structure, though.
Apologies.
So, there are, there are three types of reserves, and I'll focus first on the joint reserves, because that's the primary one that you'll see. The, the joint reserves are the ones that we talked about with those targets. So, you're trying to get enough of a kind of a balance, you're building a balance sheet in order to be tradable with other folks, right? Seen as a good credit risk. That's a goal, and that's a good, that's a good goal for any business, I would believe. The second choice is a, a term called discretionary reserves. And what that means is kind of exactly how it's stated. It's discretionary. So, it's discretionary to Concord. So, if Concord felt that it wanted to add a small element of cost to each individual rate, that would be collected by us, and we would call it discretionary for Concord's purpose only, and we would account for that. The third element of reserves is kind of related to that 180-days value that I showed to you earlier. That's where you get to excess reserves. So, whenever you get above that 180 days, we just allocate that and turn it into discretionary reserves on behalf of each individual community. So, those are three components. The, the last one I spoke about, unlikely to occur all that often, because the goal is not to get to 180 days. Think of that as a cap. But you need a mechanism in order to sweep that and, and handle what happens at that point. And our documents are out there on the website. I actually go there myself to get them sometimes. They, they do walk through this quite well, I think. It's our financial reserves policy, if you want to review it. The discretionary reserves is discretionary only up to each individual community, and there is talk among communities as to what can we do with that? Can we build our own projects with that? Can we run a weatherization program with that? Can we increase the efficiency dollars associated with that? It's up to the community's discretion, not CPCNH's. We've, we will just account for it, for you. Segregated was, I think, the second question, so we will...
I think you answered the question. I mean, some of the funds are segregated.
Yep.
The discretionary reserves would be segregated from the others. But I guess the last piece was just whether Concord should, could have a weighted vote because we would bring a proportionate amount of customers to, to the cooperative.
Concord would have one vote, just like any member of the coalition. What each individual member can do, though, is be active. So, it is a community-power coalition, which is only as strong as the folks that are participating in it. We have 20 fantastic board members. There's actually an election that's coming up in April, should folks want to join fairly soon. There would be, there are seven seats that are up, and I think I've only seen nine folks that are interested in serving. So, the coalition works as a one-member, one-vote organization. Thank you.
Just to interject very quickly on that point, I believe it's governed by state law. These kinds of cooperatives are not permitted to have weighted voting. It's one vote per member.
One other element, too, I would add to that, is we have a pretty, pretty substantial committee structure. And as you all know, just like you saw the committee here today, there's a lot of work that gets done in the committee structure. That is not, that's not a board election. That's a members, a member, any member can be on there. You don't have to be on the board to be on the committees. Otherwise, we really wouldn't be able to staff them, right? So, we're looking as, as much help as we can get. Mayor Forten.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for your presentation. You highlighted all the successes that you guys had so far in different communities. Could you please give us an example of challenges or opportunities you had in other communities? Because it's great to hear the successes, but what has been challenges that the coalition faced during the time it launched?
I can say that, that questions that I've heard, that the committee and the council has asked of the committee, as well as the committee has asked of itself, are the similar, are similar questions that pretty much any community in New Hampshire is working with. I can tell you what my challenges are acting as the chief executive officer, is trying to make sure that all our members' needs are being met. We are, we are growing quite quickly, and I think that's a fantastic thing. And our staff is growing to serve that as well. But we will have different communities, we'll have different needs, and our organization will move forward as the board sees fit. So, that was back, going back to my comment on being active in the coalition. But overall, challenges, there haven't been too many. Follow-up.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. And I, I get it, because when people save money, it's a great success, right? The federal government is pushing to lower energy rates, and I have asked that question. If the energy rate goes down, are you guys planning to go down below or at least comparable to the energy rate based on the federal government?
We do our best to try to be as competitive as we can, and most every, every energy provider is working in the same arena, with the same market. And we keep, we try to keep our options as flexible as possible, so if we see an opportunity, we can take advantage of it. I think so far, you've seen three rate adjustments. We've been able to stay quite competitive with the other utilities. Thank you. Counselor Schlosser.
Thank you for the presentation. Could you explain the prospects of net metering for those Concord residents who've already installed solar panels? How would that might work?
Net metering is a topic that I talk about at least once a week, usually three times a week. So, unfortunately, we're not able to, I need to put caveat around it because it's not a simple question, but in, for, in general, when thinking about net metering and community power, it's best to think about those, those customers should not enroll in, in community power. And that's not because we don't want to serve them. We do want to serve them. Many of the folks that help put together Community Power are looking at the innovative things that we can do to help move New Hampshire forward. And innovation is around innovative rates. Net metering is an innovative rate. It's a different rate than just flat, right? So, the reason we're unable to serve net metering customers right now is something we are working very, very hard to change, but the utilities are having issues with their systems to give us data. So, to give you an example, I think it makes it, it's, it's highly illustrative of what the issue is, is when you have a net metering customer, sometimes that production serves, you produce more than you actually need at your home, and you need to export that energy. In a good, proper net metering rate, you will have export credits that will accumulate for that, that you can use to credit against your bill. The utility data that we get to see now is a zero any time that you have anything that's not being used, being pushed into the system. So, we could develop a fantastic rate and allow that export to be credited at that rate, but if we see a zero, anything times a zero is going to be zero. So, we can't credit anything on your bill. We're trying to fix that. I think we're going to make some great headway. I'm really hoping we get to the end of that this year. I can't make any promises, but in the near term, depending, maybe by the time that Concord would launch, we would have a solution. That would be great. But in the near term, we can't serve those customers. Thank you. Counselor Foote.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, Beth Fenster-Marker and the group here, we should all be very thankful for their efforts in the, in the entire Energy Advisory Committee. Just amazing, the few short months I've been a part of this, the work they've done. I drilled down as much as I could, and I just, you know, this is an absolute win-win for this community. You know, it, you know, it, it gets us towards our energy goals for 2030. It allows folks that want to opt out to go to the default rate, and I'm going to guess there's going to be a few of those EverSource people, maybe 410. And, you know, but it does allow so much choice. And one of the terms I heard from one of the consultants...
Counselor, it sounds like your comments, you're doing public comments. Do you have a question?
So, I just, I can't, I'm thrilled to be here to talk about this.
You'll have a chance to express that during the action phase.
Excuse me?
You'll have a chance to express that during the action phase. Before we vote, you'll have an opportunity to express your support.
Would you believe?
Thank you.
This, that what's being presented here actually gives so much more advantage to, to ratepayers. The favorite term I, I really liked is when I heard shades of green. How green do you want to be? It gives people the opportunity to accelerate where they want to be as far as the climate and those type of activities. So, and then I'll just end with this, is that for me, what it comes down to is, you know, we make a lot of decisions here, and they usually, you know, usually finances are involved. It's not too many times that we can actually advance something that's green and good for the environment and also save money. In this case, you know, the average ratepayer or the average person, family that utilizes about 650 kilowatts per hour, per month, you know, it's, it's going to be $12 to $15 a month savings, and it all adds up. So, I can't be more pleased to sit here tonight and, and really, I should be asking questions, but to advocate for this.
And thank you, Counselor Schultz, for the, for the, yeah, the little out there. Counselor, which I, which I usually use, but I don't see where you are. Counselor Kurtz.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, just to make sure I understand everything clearly. Thank you. So, returning to the question about net metering, thank you for that explanation. Is it, it's correct that net metering customers won't be placed on this in the opt-out? They're in an opt-in position if we adopt. Is that correct?
We will be using everything we can to make sure that occurs. The reason I stated it that way, instead of just, no, they will not be put in, is we won't know that they're net metering unless the utilities tell us they're net metering. If we don't get an, we call it a flag, let's just call it a notification on their account that they're net metering, we won't know.
Okay. Thank you. That's an important piece for us to know about communication. Could you please speak to what happens to any reserves should the city of Concord, after enrolling with Community Power, choose to withdraw from the coalition? What happens to the monies that we've built up in reserves, the 120 days should we get there, for example?
Those reserves, if Concord decided to leave the coalition and no longer take services, then those reserves would go to Concord.
Thank you. And my last one.
Follow-up?
Follow-up? May I follow up? Okay, thank you. Apologies. Could you speak to what rates residents might see should we adopt the fourth recommendation, which is to make the opt-in, or, excuse me, to make the default rate the 33% rather than the state mandated 24.3%?
I believe it's 8.4. I'm just pulling up my glasses and the...
It's 8.4.
Yeah, thanks.
So, just to clarify for anyone listening, that is still a lower rate, so that is a darker shade of green, using Counselor Foote's, at a lower rate than we are currently paying through Unitil. Is that correct?
That's true.
Thank you very much.
Can I also clarify one thing about the question?
Sure.
Ratepayers that are currently with independent power producers on the market, they will have to opt in to this program.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
I have questions. So, you're recommending, the committee is recommending Granite Basic. I understand correct?
Granite Plus.
Plus a 33%.
A 33%.
Is anybody, based on your, you have the man here, is anybody doing the Clean 50 or Clean 100?
Right now, our documents don't, or our policies don't allow to offer those as a default option.
Okay.
Those are opt-up options.
Okay. So, if you got to the point where you could, could, if, if you wanted to, if your rules changed and you wanted to make 50 a default item, who would have to approve that? Would it be, if, let's say, let's say the, the board decided to do that for whatever purposes? Because, and, and it'd still save everybody money. It still was the best rate. Is that something the advisory committee or the city council would have to vote to change what the Concord's default rate? Because you have, every community has their own different, could have their own different default rate, right? So, is that something, my, I guess my question is, is that something the board can do on its own, or is that something the city council, along with the advisory committee, would have to approve the change to go from a, to go from a plus to a 50?
I think that would be our decision to do that. It would be a possibility that our committee would examine, but it would not happen unless this council approved it.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Fantasy. Yeah, thank you. This is a very basic question, but just so members of the community understand, are the people, if, if my pole goes down outside of my house, should I be calling Community Power?
No.
So, who's going to continue to service poles and wires? That's not what you're doing, right?
No, it isn't. And I would love to give you, I have a nice graphic to help explain that, which is a picture of a bill, and hopefully, folks are looking at their bills. There are different, there are different services that are on that bill. We only provide the supply service. The distribution service belongs to the distribution utility, which is what they're built to do. They are built to keep those wires up, those poles strong, and making sure that those trucks stay on the road. So, they, you would call the distribution utility.
If my pole goes down, I'm calling Counselor Fantasy.
I do, I want to, one more thing about that, if you don't mind, Commissioner, is that the, or Counselor, is you're still the utility, you're still a customer of the distribution utility. You're just taking a different supply service.
Any other questions for these gentlemen? Gentlemen, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else, would anyone else like to testify on this item? Welcome. Please identify.
Hello. My name is Kate West, and I live in Concord in Ward 9. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I'm happy to see Concord's representatives acknowledging the importance of access to electricity, the urgency of strategizing to accommodate renewable energy options, and the willingness to join with other communities to form a coalition to meet a common goal. The resolution before you states municipal community power is a tool to aggregate the demand of customers and purchase electric power on behalf of a community, and that the coalition supports cities, towns, and counties in joint power solicitations. In keeping with this theme of uniting with communities outside of Concord to achieve change related to electricity distribution to citizens, I would like to inform the council that the sole remaining power station in Gaza ran out of fuel on October 11th, 2023, according to BBC News, meaning Gaza has been without electricity for 152 days. As I just stated, the purpose of a community coalition is to leverage the collective power of many. This is how advocacy works. We are asking you, as our representatives, to use your collective voice to advocate to our federal officials through the passing of Concord's own resolution for ceasefire.
Kate West, do you have other comments directly related to the adoption of the, of the proposed item?
Sure. When contemplating Concord's responsibility, whether things are your responsibility, I encourage you to reflect on a teaching shared across all Abrahamic faiths, the answer to Cain's question to God, "Am I my brother's keeper?" Thank you for your time. Ceasefire now.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to testify to the item before us? Mr. Schweitzer.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, City Manager, City Clerk. I'm Roy Schweitzer. And I'm going to have a kind of the opposite approach from Counselor Foot. I want to ask a question as part of my testimony. And that is, I'm not quite sure how this model works. In other words, supposedly, you know, Unitil goes out and gets bids for power and comes up with a rate based on, you know, the power they bought, and the coalition does the same thing. But it would seem to me that both of these groups need to know in advance how much power they need. And right now, Unitil can do that because essentially, they provide power for anyone in their service area. And so they're going to go out and buy power, some at higher rates, some at lower rates, and come up with a blended rate for everybody. And presumably, the coalition does the same thing. And my question is, let's say that a bunch of people leave Unitil and join the coalition. Now, all of a sudden, the coalition needs more power than they've got rates for. And let's assume that they've previously gotten the cheapest stuff. The more customers they get, they're going to have to start buying more and more expensive power to, you know, serve these additional customers. And I'm not quite sure how they can do that within their rate structure. At the same time, Unitil, I won't say they have a problem, they have a situation where if they are losing customers, now they can discontinue some of their high-cost providers and lower their rates. And so, you know, how can you set a rate when you don't know how many customers you have and the providers have different numbers? So, you know, like I say, I asked a question, you made comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schweitzer. Any questions for Mr. Schweitzer? Mr. Schweitzer, good to see you. Anyone else like to testify? Please identify yourself.
Yes, sure. Hi. My name is Emily Mans. I work for Standard Power. And some of you, or maybe all of you, know that Standard Power was considered for services, community power services for the City of Concord. I have been following the progress of the city's search for supplier, supplier of services. And, hold on, just going to move this back there. Okay. And certainly, we weren't chosen in the, or we're not before you in this proposal, but we would, you know, continue to look for ways to assist you in this endeavor. Community Power is a great program and, and it, all communities should be doing it. It's going to provide savings and customer benefits. So my comments here today are really related to some details of the proposal. I am suggesting that the proposal could have some changes and, well, including, of course, the change of service provider, but, but in the absence of that, I, I'll just start here, which is that if the proposal as written is adopted, the city customers will forego stable rates. So I want to say partly to blame, to not bringing the benefits of stable rates for customers to your attention sooner, but, or more formally sooner, but the Community Power Coalition will forever change its rates when it does, like when it decides to. That's in the, in its documents. It's intending to change them every six months, like the utilities. So customers in Concord will have, will know their rates July 1st or the end of June for August 1st, and so on, every six months. So that's a real loss of a benefit that, that you didn't, you don't need to lose if you worked with Standard Power. Another thing about the Community Power Coalition is that you hear how complex it is. And you really haven't even scratched the surface because the, the documents that the city would enter into under this agreement, well, may or may not include several documents that are not just legal documents. The documents are very legally refined, but they're also have a financial impact. So just like a contract, you can write a contract that's legal, but you might not want to sign it. So they're documents that are implied, possibly in this resolution that would be signed, that you may or may not have reviewed. I mean, I don't know, in the public record, I haven't seen the, I can't remember all the names, but the cost-sharing agreement. Well, the first one's the joint powers agreement. So that's how you kind of join the coalition at the first level. But then there's ones, cost-sharing agreement, there's something with risk in the title. There are, you know, impactful documents that will affect customers. And, and I'm struck by, in the resolution, the, in the preamble, in the whereas's, it gives, first one is the city's goals of renewable energy, and the, the fourth one is, is really CPCNH's goals. But, and I'm not trying to be cute here, I'm saying, where are the customers' goals in your preamble and in the resolution? This is really very focused on corporate goals of, and I mean that, I don't mean that, you know, as a for-profit company, but I mean as for the city corporate goals, for the organization of CPCNH, their goals. I mean, it's a bit of a stretch if you read these plain without knowing what they do or what their point is, how you get to customers in Concord. So the, so stable rates are one item that you'll be missing. Another is local control. I've heard this term used related to CPCNH, but, and I'll liken it to this. The city council is local control and the statehouse is, but really more like comparing to CPCNH. You would have representation there, but you, it's, it's not local control. You're giving up local control over your program. And so why would you do that? But also, if you take your city manager, why give him responsibility for committee assignments or for supervising committee assignments rather than giving him what is in his wheelhouse and in his staff's wheelhouse, which is designing contracts and signing contracts and managing contracts for power? Because the way Standard Power does power is similar to the city's contract for power. We go out, we do a blind competitive bid, and we get a stable rate contract. And that's really common for municipal power. It's not, it's the, we are launching programs, it's not the way we, it's the way we have done it in the past. It's not the only way that we will ever do contracts, but it is a tried and true way to get significant market benefits to customers and that otherwise can't get them. Well, residential customers can get stable rate contracts, of course, but then you're pushing them into the competitive market where rates can, can change. You get introductory rates. CPCNH's rate right now is below EverSource's rate, which is actually below the market rate. Not sure whether you realize that as Unitil customers, but EverSource is giving back a penny and a half of customer overcharges. So there's nobody going out in the market right now and getting, you know, rates similar, well, they, you know, they can have similar rates because, of course, the gas price has dropped and the markets are very complicated. But the point is that Standard Power does stable rate contracts, we go out and we, and then that's it. We can't manipulate our rates, but CPCNH can. And they will change rates for their, customers are part of their goal or customer savings and also their, their corporate goals of building their reserves. There were several questions about reserves. The timing of that is important for you to consider. The CPCNH in the documents says like three to five years for being fully funded through their resort, reserves for when they, after which, they can take some of those funds and do some more creative things with them. At one point, it's implied it might be in a year, and I'm pretty sure that isn't true. That might have been an estimate at one point, like maybe back when they started, but, but now it's probably three or five years. So CPCNH is, has a lot of ambition, and the documents you saw kind of cast aspersions on Standard Power's ability and ambition, but we have a rec desk, a rec trading desk now. We've done group net metering benefits for 10 years. The fact that, the idea that we are not innovative, nobody can do time-of-use rates now. We participate at the state and we intend to use those tools when they are available. Assigning innovation to one group and, you know, sort of lack of innovation to the other is, is a perspective that you have been told, but I'm here to tell you that that's not, you know, really accurate. And the council, that the, you know, and, and I'll just close by saying this, which is that in my written comments, I mentioned the introductory rates of CPCNH were 15.8 cents, about four or five cents above the market rate. The reason that's important is that they can do that whenever they want, like they can do that again. And I'm not, like, I don't know, I do believe in their intentions, but they, they have to get to several millions of dollars capitalization, and that's going to come out of Concord customers. And they refer to the early adopters, but, but they don't define who that is, but I think that's still customers. So let me just see. So I guess in closing, I just want to say that if you decide today either to not move forward with the Community Power Coalition, because you don't have enough information would be one reason about the handling of and co-mingling of customer funds. I think that that should be examined in addition to the legality of the agreements. And then we're, Standard Power would just be here to offer stable rates and local control and more renewable energy options. I do have one more, I'm sorry. Someone mentioned about the renewable energy. Right now, and, you know, you can only really judge us right now, CPCNH, you can't do a 50% renewable energy default. That's not an option. So they sort of said, well, maybe you can and maybe you can't, but with us, you can today if you wanted to. You could start by 2030, you'd have two or three times to, to change that again, and that's just already built into our plan for you to get to your renewable energy goals.
Thank you.
So thank you for letting me speak, and we'll be happy to take questions.
Any questions? Counselor Keach.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for your testimony. Could you just tell me a little bit about Standard Power? What's the corporate structure? Are you for-profit or are you nonprofit? Or what does that look like?
Sure. So thank you for the question. So we are a for-profit company. We've been, we were brokered an energy service provider since 2010. We were acquired by a company called Elevate that has mostly hydrorenewable energy assets with the intention of building 24/7 portfolio of renewable energy products to move forward. But, but Standard Power, you know, stands alone. We, the for-profit is, yes, we are for-profit, as is our supplier, but I'll just point out that, of course, CPCNH deals with profit supplier and consultants, and probably 97% of their budget is for-profit, is related to for-profit companies.
Thank you, Your Honor. So is it fair to say that any reserve earnings your company would have, would they, would they go back to the shareholders in the form of dividends? Or what does that look like?
So thank you for the question. So I have a couple of numbers here that if the, if, if there are 18,000 households in Concord, that's off the New Hampshire website, that's about 130 million annual, annual kilowatt-hours. So the cost at today's rates would be about $13 million a year. It would be at last year's rates, it would be closer to 30, $35 million annual cost of power in Concord. So millions of dollars are spent by customers, actually, you can think of it as one to $2 million a month are spent on electricity supply, that's not distribution, on electricity supply for Concord customers. So if you contracted with Standard Power, we charge a fee, and we charge a mil per kilowatt-hour, maybe with inflation, we'll go up to mil .25 or something like that. A mil per kilowatt-hour fee is $150,000 a year to administer your community power program. And that's because we, we have a, we, quote, forbid, we do services, we do outreach, we have very specific services that we can deliver for that, and we do it for a number of communities. CPCNH, in its, one of its public hearings, one of its communities talked about 3% overhead and, and then putting aside 11% for reserves. By the way, I couldn't see the slide that was up, we tried to take a picture of it to look at it, so I couldn't see the details, but, so I can't speak to that, but I can speak to this other one. Well, 3%, the cost of power at that time was, was about 10.9 cents, so that would be three and a half mils. So that's three times more in overhead. And then, but the 11% reserves, so 14% of $13 million is 1.7 million and, or of 30 million, or what do I have here, 30, 33 million would be 4.7. So CPCNH intends to retain, you know, somewhere between 1.7 to 4, let's call it 1.5 to 4.5 million dollars per year. The 1.5 is for, of course, the 14% of the 13 million of the current rate. So CPCNH is going to retain, and they say that's for your benefit. They have a line that says the community name and they have the amount, but the question is, at what time is that ever available for you? How does that benefit your customers? Because you are, you know, you have constituents, the, you know, the city goals are important and also your constituent goals. So how, how do those benefit? When would they be available? I think that if you say you want to leave, they're not, it's not tomorrow, I think it's three years, and they say it may, it might be shorter. But that's really just a line item relative to your, for your community that is held in, really for their benefit, for the corporate benefit. So are you, as a council, you know, by putting this in the whereas's of the, of the resolution, putting CPCNH goals here, are you, you know, I'm not, this is a rhetorical question, and again, I'm not trying to be cute about this, I'm really like asking you to reflect about whose goals are coming first when, in this proposal where you're working with an organization that has goals in addition to the cities and, and your customers?
Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your time, I really appreciate it. I'm dry, I should have brought something to drink, but thank you so much.
Would anyone else, excuse me, would anyone else like to testify?
Thank you. I'm John Goddett. I'm in Ward 10, in Jeff's Ward, and I'm one of those five or six EverSource customers that the city seems to have. And I also have already negotiated with a supplier on my own, so I'm a little bit familiar with this. I guess there are two things that I would ask the council to consider. The first one is that in all the comparisons, it appears to me that EverSource and Unitil are restricted by some, you know, legal mechanism, that they can only source the power every six months, whereas the coalition can source it at any time. If those power companies were able to source whenever they wanted to, I'm wondering if their results would produce lower cost and then remove the need for all the overhead that the coalition will bring with, you know, extra staff and such. So first thing to consider. The second thing to consider is, in all the conversations, and I understand the desire to move towards the renewable energy, no one specifically stated that the Granite Plus costs more than the Granite Basic. And in the current economic environment that we have, we have people that are making decisions based on, do I get my meds or do I go to the food store? Asking them to pay additional when it's not necessary is something I don't think that we should do. Now, if you went ahead and targeted and tried to say, hey, we think these folks are the ones that are at risk to move them lower, great, if you wanted to push, you know, for the 33%, but we really need to consider that renewable energy is not going to matter if these people can't, you know, eat and pay their bills this week.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Goddett?
Thank you. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify? Welcome, and please identify yourself.
Thank you, members of the council. My name is Sam Evans-Brown. I'm president of Ward Five. I work in the energy sphere. I interact with the utilities on a daily basis. I understand this stuff better than most. Mostly, I'm just coming up to say to you all that this committee really ran this question to ground. They did their homework. You're hearing questions that are being sort of thrown up here without a chance for the folks who will be providing the services to respond to them. I can assure you, there are answers to every single question that has been said in the past two, from the past two witnesses. the past two, from the past two witnesses. I think the, the basic question you all should be asking yourselves is, how are we going to be good stewards of the ratepayers in our community? I think there's a very simple answer to that, just look at the rate that the Community Power Coalition is offering versus the rate that the brokers are offering. There's the potential that if we were to launch with a broker, we'd be actually raising the electricity rates of our, of our community members, and I don't think we can, can in good conscience do that. So, happy to answer any questions if folks have them, also happy to just go home and have dinner.
Any questions for Mr. Evans Brown? Thank you, Sam. Would anyone else like to testify on Community Power? Welcome, please identify yourself.
Ian McGregor, Ward 7. I have heard, you know, discussions been going on with Community Power and sourcing our energy for six months or so, I'm not sure how long the Energy Committee has been working on that, but I've, I've heard about it. And I also remember about a year ago, when Breeze Line was coming into Concord, and there was just promotional material everywhere. I was getting phone calls from Xfinity and Breeze Line, and it was not enjoyable as a, you know, consumer of the internet. And I, I just kept wondering, I'm like, well, where's Unitil? Where's Eversource in this discussion? So, until I actually went and looked at what some of the committee was saying and what some of the documents that Community Power put up, it was, I don't want to say sketchy, but it was like circumspect. I wanted to, you know, hear everybody's side. And then I started reading, I was like, oh, no, this makes sense, to be able to have a nonprofit cooperative with elections. Speaking to a city council that has a lot of new members, I think you guys realize the importance of elections and having, you know, your representatives and your voice heard within a structure. But the thing that really brought it home tonight, and I was actually at home listening to this, because I, this is something that matters to me, whether it's providing renewable energy to my, you know, children and grandchildren, or just making sure that I'm getting the best rate that I can as a energy user. Having the representative from Standard Power here to plead their case is a competition. And it's like, okay, this is not too good to be true. This is a competitive capitalist, you know, let's do what's best with all, all the information we have. And I think it's worth pointing out that when I had Breeze Line, or when I was a customer of the two internet companies that were vying for my business, it caused me to go back and look at what each one offered, and I went with neither of them. So, I commend the Energy Committee for doing the amount of research they have. Thank you, City Council, for doing your due diligence. City staff, I know you've been working tirelessly for this, and just, everyone, thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. Any questions for this? Nope, all right. You're good, you're good.
While you can.
Would anyone else like to testify on Community Power? All right, seeing no one, I close the public hearing on Item 28A, and I open the public hearing on Item 28B. Madam Clerk?
It's a resolution appropriating sum of $880,000 in the Traffic Signals and Traffic Operations Improvements Project for the design and construction of traffic signal upgrades and associated improvements at the intersections of North State, Central Streets, and North Main, Washington, and Ferry Streets, authorizing the issuance of bonds and notes in the sum of $880,000, and repurposing the sum of $101,221.97 from the State Street, Pleasant Street Intersection Subproject for this purpose.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager.
And, members of the City Council, the city of Concord maintains 54 traffic signals at 54 different intersections, some dating back to the 1980s, and that doesn't sound that far away, but mast arm life, that's old, so they usually last about 40 years. The, over the past year, the vehicle detection system for the traffic signals at North Main, Ferry, and Washington Street intersection failed. Additionally, one of the traffic signal mast arms located at Center and North State intersection also failed, and we had to make temporary repairs. The, the permanent repairs will include replacement of all the poles and mast arms at each location. Presently, traffic signal mast arms are a long lead time item for procurement, typically taking eight-plus months to receive an order once it's been placed. These extensive repairs will trigger the compliance with the ADA requirements, such as sidewalk ramp and other improvements will be required to intersection, so it makes sense to do all this at the same time. The estimated cost of design and construction of all these upgrades and the pedestrian improvements at the two intersections is $1,053,000. Presently, CIP 283 includes $71,830 for upgrades. Additionally, we have $101,221.97 in surplus that's available from completed replacement of signalized intersection at Pleasant and State. So, after set available funds, an additional $880,000 is needed to be appropriated to complete the full upgrade of the intersections. I'd wait until budget to bring this to you, but if we, given the eight-month delay time, it makes sense to move, I believe it makes sense to move on it now so that we can actually get these under order and get these improvements made, because it, it needs to be done sooner than later. Be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for the City Manager? Councilor Brown?
Thank you, yes. Mr. City Manager, these are just existing mast arms, these are not any new mast arms.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Councilor Fancy?
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, do we have any sort of existing process to inspect our, our signal systems to, to make sure we don't have any potential failures coming up?
We're, we're actually looking at all of the intersections and going to prioritize them in the capital improvement program budget, so you'll actually be able to get out in front and, and do those. We may, if you, I think what you'll note is, when you see that, a lot of these traffic signals went in at about the same, not all, but many of them went in at about the same time the technology is getting to the point where it needs to be replaced and repaired. So, you're going to see several of these coming up in the next several years, but we're going to try to space them out as best we can to make, make it affordable.
Any further questions? All right, seeing none, I'll open Item 28B to public hearing. Mr. Schrecker?
Let's go on School Street, the signals will go off next. Hello, everybody, I'm still Roy Schrecker. These are intersections very close to where I live, I would say I go through one or more of them several times a day. And yes, I saw the new pole they put in at Center and North State, and hope they fix that soon. But my real question is, you say this is for the design and construction, and I'd like to testify that the design should include whether all of these lights are necessary. The two on Main Street that are very close together, the one that's North Main and Ferry, well, I mean, I used to go to Rumford Press, I wonder if we still have the same quantity of vehicles going out and out of Rumford Press that we used to, and maybe we really don't need a traffic light there, because operating in conjunction with the other one so close to it, it really fouls up the traffic bad. It might be better off to eliminate that one light entirely. And the other thing I've heard is, oh, that was necessary for Friendly's Restaurant. Well, Friendly's Restaurant isn't there anymore, and there's no guarantee that they'll be putting a restaurant back where Friendly's is. So, I think that as part of this process, the design elements should include looking at whether we need that, I mean, well, we need all the lights, but in particular, the one at Ferry Street and North Main. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schrecker. Any questions for Mr. Schrecker? Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to testify on Item 28B? Yes, sir.
My name is Carl Sargent, landscape consultant, and my question is, why are we considering a traffic signal at McGee Square, which would be very dangerous for especially students traveling across this? I'm recommending that they upgrade the light to, with detect, let's say, if they're coming on Route 13 and there's cars coming at night, it would stay green and not go through the existing sequence and that. And it would also help with traffic movement, except at the worst hours, but the worst hours, you know, are going to be, anybody's going to be in those. So, that's what I would recommend, that we do not consider. I would rather see just a walk, you know, strip across rather than a circle down there. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Sargent, any questions for Mr. Sargent? Seeing none, thank you, sir, thank you so much. Would anyone like, else like to speak on Item 28B? Welcome, please identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Danell Thomas, I use she/her pronouns, I'm a resident of Concord, New Hampshire. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with me, with you this evening. The resolution before you states, "Some intersections have failed and temporary emergency repairs were made to keep the intersections in operation." I appreciate the city's willingness to take immediate action when faced with an emergency. While faulty traffic signals are dangerous and could result in death, the bombardment of Gaza has killed more than 29,000 Palestinians since October 7th, according to Time Magazine, and is a dangerous emergency requiring immediate action.
Thomas, do you have, do you have comments directly relating to the item before us?
The resolution before you states, "Engineering consultants perform structural inspection of traffic must, signal mast arms that are estimated to be 25 years of older. These signal mast arms are older than most Palestinian civilians. NPR reports that half of Gaza's population is under 18, and 70% of the population in Gaza is under 30." The resolution before you states, "The inspection effort revealed the need to replace critical components of traffic signal infrastructure." A National Library Medicine article states, "The destruction of Gaza's infrastructure is exacerbating environmental and health impacts." And the result-
Thomas, please, please direct your remarks specifically to the proposal to replay the mast arm?
It's germane, it's related to local municipal issues, and if you disagree with my understanding of, I don't know, germane issue and how it's related, I don't know, what's the procedure from there?
Well, I can thank you for your testimony, and ask if anybody else wants to testify.
Do you get to single-handedly decide as an individual in the board?
The mayor is the deciding officer on the City Council, sir.
Oh, okay. I use she/her pronouns, but thanks for your time.
Would anyone else like to testify on Item 28B? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on Item 28B, and open the public hearing on Item 28C. Madam City Clerk?
It's a public hearing regarding the status of the following items: $750,000 in public facilities COVID-19 pandemic relief, community development block grant funds, sub-granted to the Boys and Girls Club of Central New Hampshire; $500,000 in public facilities community development grant funds, sub-granted to the Crisis Center of Central New Hampshire; and $500,000 in housing community development block grant funds, sub-granted to Concord Coalition to End Homelessness.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. City Manager.
And, members of the council, Mr. Thompson will present this, the, the public information hearings on the Pennacook Boys and Girls Club, the Crisis Center of Central New Hampshire, and the Concord Center to End Homelessness.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Your Honor, members of the council. The community development block grant funds that are available to municipalities through the Hampshire Community Finance Authority requires a status hearing as part of the grant process through the federal rulemaking. Up to $500,000 annually is available for economic development projects, another $500,000 for public facility projects, up to $500,000 for housing projects, $500,000 for emergency activities, and up to $25,000 available for planning study grants. All those projects must directly benefit low and moderate income families. There is these three projects, which I'll be summarizing tonight, the status where they stand currently for the funds that were sub-granted through the city. There is no action necessary from the council, this is just the statutorily required public hearing that is required to be held per the grant requirements. The first update is the project for CDBGCV funds for $750,000 sub-granted to the Boys and Girls Club of Central New Hampshire, which is for the construction of the Pennacook Community Center at 83 and 87 High Street in Concord. The majority of the beneficiaries will be low and moderate income. Construction began in July 2023 and is expected to be completed in June of 2024. The construction is approximately 80% complete to date. The second progress update is $500,000 of CDBG public facility grant funds. 475 of those were sub-granted to the Crisis Center of Central New Hampshire for the acquisition of 27 Warren Street to turn the, into the client servicing offices for CCCNH. The majority of their clients are of low and moderate income. The property was acquired in June of 2023, renovations completed in November of 2023, and CCCNH began operating out of the facility this past November. Finally, the third progress update is 500,000 of community development block grant housing funds for, 475,000 sub-granted to the Concord Coalition to End Homelessness or related entity to be determined towards the acquisition and/or rehabilitation of 6th State Street in Concord. That would be converted into eight units of low-income housing, transitional housing for the Coalition. Acquisition of that property is expected to take place this spring, with rehab occurring in the summer of '24, through the summer of '25. Here to answer any particular questions you may have regarding the update of these projects, and-
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Any questions for Mr. Thompson? Seeing none, thank you, sir. Would anyone like to testify on Item 28C? Mr. Schrecker? I'm sorry, come on up. Welcome, please identify yourself.
Hi, my name's Caroline Skivoni, I live in Kittery, Maine. I have been a resident of New Hampshire for most of my life, I was born in New Hampshire. I no longer live in New Hampshire because I could not afford to live in the seacoast anymore, I was priced out, so, yeah, this feels a little relevant. So, I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to speak, this, to be able to speak with you this evening. The report before you states that for the purpose of community development, the city of Concord is constructing a new Pennacook Community Center intended to include the following heavily valued programs and organizations, the Pennacook Boys and Girls Club, the Crisis Center of Central New Hampshire, Concord Coalition to End Homelessness, and a new branch of the Concord Public Library. I'm pleased to see that the city of Concord champions resources for childcare, escaping violence, ending homelessness, and providing access to educational materials. I also was an educator in New Hampshire for several years, working in the Nashua School District and for a nonprofit in Tufton Borough. It is due to the city's commitment to these values that I would like to bring to your attention, the fact that while our community's children access care through the Pennacook Boys and Girls Club, according to BBC News report, Palestinians have had to create a new acronym to describe hundreds of childrens and children in their community, which is WCNSF, or Wounded Child No Surviving Family. And that while the Crisis Center of New Hampshire helps Granite Cedars escape violence, according to a CBC News report, Palestinians are enduring a bombing campaign that is the most destructive of this century, with CNN reporting that an act of intense violence we have not seen since Vietnam.
Could you please confine your remarks to the specific item before us?
Yeah, so, I believe that these issues are integral to each other, I believe that they are connected. Additionally, many of you have used addressing the housing crisis as an integral part of your campaign platform. And while Granite Cedars battle to find affordable housing options in New Hampshire, such as myself, I now live in Maine, especially in Concord, the UN reports that eight in 10 Gazans are now homeless. We are part a big global community, and I believe that human rights in our community is, it impacts, what we say about that impacts the rest of the world. So, also, some of you, on January 15th, when it comes around, we have been seen on social media sharing a quote by Martin Luther King Jr. that says, "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." I believe that this issue is in the same. So, I implore you to heed these words that you, some of you have shared, that you believe, and that human rights are a municipal issue. Thank you for your time, and ceasefire now.
Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Mr. Schrecker?
I, I guess I'm happy that these projects are all proceeding, but I just kind of wish that we could pick more appropriate projects. We have problems in this city, and I think the city needs to, instead of just letting people apply for things and picking the one they like the best, maybe we need to get some directed projects for things. I mean, as an example, you know, maybe what we need to do in the budget time is cut the salary of the city managers and the two assistant city managers in half, because I read in the monitor that the grant for the Pennacook Community Center does not cover the library, it only covers the- it only covers the rest of it. And I'm not quite sure whether that's true, if this is for public facilities, why aren't the taxpayers of the city, you know, getting their share of that grant to go towards the public facilities? So, we need to start thinking about how can we reduce our tax rate by using some of these grants on our stuff instead of somebody else's? Regarding the next one, there's a CPA firm in Concord that's eliminated their office, because like I said, what do we need an office for? You know, our people either spend time, you know, at the client's site auditing books or they could do it at home, so eliminate an office. So, getting the Crisis Center spending $800,000 on an office, you know, that's kind of going the wrong way. Remember when we had this talk before? I said that there was someone who wanted their services and was told, "We can't put you up in a shelter for two months, and you've got to book your crisis two months in advance." I mean, they're not a Crisis Center, they're the Concord Housing Authority, it sounds like. So, if they're not going to do the crisis work for our city, we need maybe the new police station to build a couple of spaces so someone that has a crisis actually has a place they can go. Or maybe we need to find a different group that'll do it. Lastly, in regarding the Concord Coalition, once again, I read in the monitor that they're spending $300,000 to build one-bedroom apartments, $300,000 each. And there's kind of a rule of thumb, and maybe the rent on something is 1%, the monthly rent is 1% of what it costs. So, a one-bedroom apartment costs $300,000, that means the monthly rent for it should be $3,000. You know, we're, when you pay $3,000 for a one-bedroom apartment? We need to find some group in the city that will develop some genuine low-cost housing. Right now, we have a choice, we could live out in the woods for free, or to get to, you know, one of these very small apartments that we're only building a few a year because they cost so much. We need to have a publicly-run campground where people can stay safely with, you know, sanitary facilities, trash facilities, an RV park maybe, so people, you know, an RV can live in it, that's how people used to live cheaply, they travel, there's a whole crew of people with RVs that go work at Walmart distribution centers and stuff. If we had an RV park, we could do that. We need rooming houses, we need efficiency apartments, we need to quit saying there's nothing between a $3,000 one-bedroom apartment and living in the woods. We need to get some low-cost housing options for people, and if the groups that are building these won't apply for them, we need to go out and solicit groups or create new groups to develop these low-cost housing options. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schweitzer. Any questions for Mr. Schweitzer? Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to testify on item 28C? Please state your name.
Hi, my name is Sayer Mosqua, I'm a resident of Concord, New Hampshire. I was also a domestic violence advocate for the state of New Hampshire for about three years, and I just wanted to testify to the fact that Crisis Centers do shelter people in crisis, families, single people, all the time. Do have, we did have limited facilities and did our very best with what we had, while we all wish that we could always do more. The violence that people experience in Merrimack County was more than we could accommodate. Furthermore, the worldwide, the World Health Organization reports that Gaza's education system has also been severely compromised, 104 schools have either been destroyed or sustained-
Mr. Thompson, please confine your remarks to the item before us.
We are asking you, as our representatives, to advocate for our federal officials to protect the universal right to safety for children, protection from violence-
Mr. Thompson, that is not on our agenda.
...access to housing and educational resources, and that the city of Concord clearly values through the passing of Concord's own resolution for a ceasefire and enduring peace agreement.
Mr. Thompson, you're out of order.
Thank you for your time, ceasefire now.
Thanks very much. Easy, are you all right? Okay. Would anyone else like to testify on item 28C? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing on item 28C. With the agreement of the city council, I'm going to combine the public hearings on items 28D and 28E because they pertain to the same project.
Yes, sir.
That's fine, yes.
All right. Madam City Clerk, would you please open the public hearings on items 28D and 28E?
Absolutely. First item is a resolution appropriating the sum of $561,074 in the new airport terminal building project for the design permitting and bidding of a new airport terminal building, and accepting the sum of $365,754 in grant funds from the Federal Aviation Administration, the sum of $20,320 from the state of New Hampshire, and authorizing the issuance of bonds and notes in the sum of $175,000 for this purpose. Next item is a resolution appropriating the sum of $5,792 in the airport fund as a transfer out to capital, authorizing the use of airport fund balance for this purpose, and appropriating the sum of $115,830 in the new airport terminal building project for the design and permitting of a new parking lot and related improvements, accepting the sum of $104,246 in grant funds from the Federal Aviation Administration, accepting the sum of $5,792 from the state of New Hampshire, and accepting the sum of $5,792 as a transfer from the airport fund for this purpose.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
Your members of the council, as you know, the Concord Airport Terminal Building was constructed in 1938 and renovated in 1961, and due to the age of the building, there are a variety of building code violations, structural deficiencies, inadequate security measures. The 2006 master plan strongly recommended the construction of a new terminal building and parking facilities. In 2019, city council appropriated funds to complete the airport terminal study to review alternatives for a new building, so it's completed in 2021, and the final recommendation of a stakeholder committee involved in the study to move forward with the design and construction of a new terminal building. On February 8th, 2021, the terminal building study was presented to the city council and approved to move forward with design and construction. In March of 2023, the city council approved a resolution authorizing me to apply for a grant for the design and permitting of a new airport terminal building. The new building is proposed to be 5,450 square feet, of which approximately 27% is allocated for private use administration, car rental tenant, and small eatery, and these are considered non-eligible for Federal Aviation Administration or state funding. The resolution that you have in front of you, as the city clerk mentioned, there is a portion related to funds, or city funds, but those will be paid for by the airport fund, not by the general taxpayer funds. So that is the airport terminal itself, and you actually can see the pictures of the terminal building. There's a 14-page plan that was presented to you as part of this attachment, so you can see what that looks like, and as can the community because it's on the web. And as far as the parking lot, the 2006 airport master plan recommended the new terminal being constructed at the airport, and that includes money for a, to improve the parking lot, infrastructure, and landscape improvements to support the facility. Again, you authorized me to apply for a grant, we did, we were successful, and again, the city's share of that would be 5% of the total project cost, and again, that city's share would be airport funds, not general taxpayer funds. And of course, as we did this, the grants have been announced, we've been awarded those, and so this is happening much faster than we had ever hoped it would due to success in your authorization to apply for these grants, so we'd like to move forward on both the terminal project and the parking lot project together at the same time.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Any questions for the City Manager? Counselor Brown?
Mr. City Manager, I see that you did say that it was happening faster, and we had allocated or anticipated the, using the airport general obligation bonds in 2026. We can accommodate that in this year?
Yes, yes you can, yes. And that's what we had looked at, we were trying to make sure that, and really because of the good work the council did in terms of the projects with United Therapeutics project out there, the lease revenue, the tax revenue associated with all these have actually, as you know, really improved the financial picture of that, and that'll be for a very long period of time. So you have a secured revenue source now to help offset any of these costs going forward. But in this will actually even position us more for future growth out of the airport.
Any other questions for the City Manager? Hearing none, is there anyone in the audience who would like to testify on the airport project, either of these items? Welcome, please state your name.
Good evening, my name is Bradley Conway. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. The resolution before you states an intention to appropriate the sum of $561,074 in the new airport terminal building project, and that a portion of this will be in grant funds from the Federal Aviation Administration. I appreciate that the Concord City Government is prioritizing the structural integrity of our airport and is willing to reach out to federal decision-makers in order to request assistance with such a project. The amount suggested in this resolution is still significantly less than the amount of Concord taxpayer dollars alone that go to fund the Israeli military each year, that number being more than half a million dollars. In funding Concord's airport, this council is demonstrating that they understand the importance of access to aviation as a means of transportation and a right of freedom for its citizens. With this in mind, it must then devastate this governing body to learn that according to CBC News report, there hasn't been an airport in Gaza Strip in two decades, and that in a 2017 report, Human Rights Watch said-
Please confine yourself to the comments about the projects before us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Additionally, I'm relieved to know that the city of Concord, through the grant writing process, is actively engaged in collective advocacy to those within our federal government who are in a position to actually affect change. This means that the city's municipal government is no stranger to the concept of making requests to those who hold positions of power at a federal level. We're asking you, as our representatives, to advocate for federal, advocate to our federal officials for the protection of Palestinians' right to freedom through the passing of Concord's own resolution for a ceasefire and enduring peace agreement between Israelis and Palestinians. Because we are part of a global community-
I'm sorry, I'm declaring you out of order.
Free Palestinians, please adopt a ceasefire resolution at the city level. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome back. Okay, people, unlike some, I'll promise this is my last time tonight. I was out at the airport today, and yeah, the parking lot probably could use some repaving and taken care of. And as far as the terminal goes, you know, one of the things that says in this plan is, if we had this, you know, new terminal building, we could watch airplanes take off nicely, and that'd really be nice, because last year I had a friend was coming into the airport and I went out to watch the planes, well, you can't. The terminal building is locked, you cannot get in it, you cannot go and look at it. There's a nice tower with instruments, you climb up the tower, look around, oh no, there's a fence around it, you can't go up that tower and look at things. So, I'm wondering, this money we're spending on this terminal building, are the people actually going to be able to use it and look at airplanes, or are you just going to sit there? And the other thing is, maybe you should find the architect for this building and send him over to the golf course, seems like they're putting a nice building up at a very cheap price. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schweitzer. Any questions for Mr. Schweitzer? Counselor Kretovic?
Mr. Schweitzer, thank you so much for coming out tonight. Would you believe I once crashed a plane at Concord, and I prefer nobody saw it?
Show of hands, how many people believe that?
True story, true story.
Well, I believe it, but I'm sorry, the good news is he walked away.
We flew away so that nobody would read the tail numbers.
Very good. Any other questions for Mr. Schweitzer?
Not a question, but it's a comment. Maybe by the time when this is over, you will be able to get in and enjoy watching the planes land.
Yeah. Have a cup of coffee. Thank you, Mrs. Schweitzer. Would anyone else like to testify on the airport project? All right, I'm going to declare the public hearings on items-
More?
Oh, I'm sorry? Yeah?
Of course, thank you so much.
Welcome, please identify yourself.
Good evening, distinguished council, my name is Paul McCain, I am a former resident of Ward 6 for many years, I currently live in Manchester, I was also priced out of the city of Concord. So in regards to this resolution we're discussing this evening, thank you for the opportunity to speak. The report before you details this project's background stating, "Due to the age of the building, there are a variety of building code violations, structural deficiencies, and inadequate security measures." It reiterates the importance of the airport and informs us of an upgrade to the lobby bathrooms in 2018. I appreciate the city's diligence in ensuring that Concord's buildings are safe and that our airports are functioning, and that bathrooms in city buildings are up to code as updated bathrooms help facilitate sanitary conditions. Since the safety and security of community structures are deemed important to Concord City Council, it may cause you distress to learn that according to BBC News, between 144,000 and 175,000 buildings across the whole Gaza Strip have been damaged or destroyed.
McCain, please confine your comments to the project at hand.
Sure. Additionally, the report before you establishes the airport is important. Airports are important for transportation access, emergency services, economic development, tourism, and cargo transport. According to a Human Rights Watch report, Israel's, oh, sorry, unlawful Gaza blockade is deadly for children as it closes borders to travel-
Mr. McCain, please confine your comments to the project.
Sure. Thank you. While the Concord Airport enjoys relatively up-to-date bathrooms, public health officials say the lack of water contamination of areas by sewage and many bodies that cannot be safely stored and morgues could trigger an infectious disease outbreak. As was previously stated, we have all learned from the COVID-19 pandemic infectious disease outbreaks do not honor the concept of municipal jurisdictions, nor do they stay contained to them. We are asking as our representatives to use your collective voice to advocate to our federal officials and urge them to allow Palestinians to access lifesaving humanitarian-
McCain, I'm declaring you out of order, thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you, Free Palestinians, ceasefire now.
Would anyone else like to testify on the airport project? All right, seeing none, I'm going to declare the public hearings on items 28D and 28E closed, and I'll open the public hearing on item 28F. Madam Clerk?
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of $305,000 in the general fund as a transfer out to capital for the purchase of PFAS-free structural firefighting gear, authorizing the use of $305,000 in unassigned fund balance, and appropriating the sum of $305,000 in the Fire Department Personal Protective Equipment Project.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Your members of the city council, to protect from water vapor burns, structural gear contains a vapor barrier that is impregnated with PFAS substances. PFAS is a group of organofluoride chemical compounds that have been termed forever chemicals and have been found have caused cancer. These chemicals absorb into the skin of firefighters wearing the gear, and a rate of absorption accelerates during exertion in hot environments. And this is strongly thought to be responsible for some of the documented increases in cancer suffered by firefighters. Traditionally, all structural firefighting gear available on the market is contained in PFAS chemicals. The Concord Fire Department has been tracking the development of new materials, and one will be available soon that will allow a fully PFAS-free gear ensemble. These materials have passed NFPA, National Fire Protection Association, standards and are expected to last some 10 years of service life. Fire Administration, working, met with Bergeron Protective Clothing Gear, it's a geared vendor, along with Globe Manufacturing, also a gear manufacturing recently, and through a strong relationship with these companies, Concord Fire has the opportunity to be in the leading-edge department to be able to purchase or receive the new gear if we make an order soon. It's not that once this gear is widely made available, it will take a long lead time due to strong demand for these options. The requested money, 305,000, will be used to replace the primary set of gear structure for each member, for a total of 92 sets of gear. Replacing each member's primary set of gear with a PFAS-free set would only require him or her to change into the backup gear set that contains PFAS for a few hours while the primary set is laundered. The Fire Department feels that this solution strikes a good balance between the safety of employees and the fiscal and logistical considerations. And I give you further information related to how that would work financially. When this was first brought to me by the fire chief, it sounded like a great idea, I immediately brought it to the mayor, who asked me to add it to the agenda. So, this is moving very, very quickly. Again, this is one of those items that you typically would see on a budget, but because of the relationships the Fire Department has built with these gear manufacturers, and I'm hoping your ability to move this fast forward, we could actually get in line with this gear and actually get it first, or first or close to first in the state, which I think will help in our recruitment efforts, as well as protect the firefighters and give them some- and give them some protection from the very hard work that they do. So this, to me, makes all sense in the world to do in a timely fashion to do it now, and if you wait, it's still going to cost you the same amount of money. It's just going to take you longer to get the gear and expose firefighters to unnecessary risks. So I'd recommend that you approve this. Again, Chief Chisholm brought this to me just shortly ago, and Mayor Champlin jumped all over it when I brought this attention, so that's why you have it in front of you tonight.
Any questions? Thank you. Any questions for the City Manager? Mayor Protem Sakle.
Thank you, Your Honor. During your statement, Mr. City Manager, did you state that you already passed the inspection, the national inspection?
Yes.
You did?
Yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Horn.
You did state that it falls within the NFPA inspections or whatnot, but how long has it been tested, and how do we know back when PFAS decades ago passed, we didn't think that they were poisonous? So how do we, how much testing has been done on this so we know we're not switching out one poison for our firefighters to another?
To another? It's, I'm relying on the, I mean, it's the preeminent agency in the country looking at the standards for gear. If I can't rely on them, then there's nobody else to rely on.
But do we know how long it was tested, the new gear?
I can ask the Fire Chief to come forward and speak to that. Or anybody else you want, John.
Welcome, Chief Chisholm. Who's this?
I'm sure you all know me. My name is Justin Kanter, President of the Concord Firefighters Union. Thanks for having me up here. Hopefully, I can provide some nice insight and answer any questions as well.
Yeah, thank you for inviting me up, Mayor, City Council. We're excited to be here. This is an exciting time for us, and hopefully will allow us to move forward and protect our members a little bit more than we've been able to previously, because these type of materials that don't have these carcinogenic PFAS materials in them have been unavailable. I believe the question was, how have these been tested? I was having some trouble hearing the question.
How long were they tested? What studies were done?
So these materials were initially tested by the manufacturer, and then what happens is when you produce a set of gear, there's several different layers, there's different components. What happens is Globe, who manufactures the gear, has to make some complete ensembles, and then they send it to the NFPA to get it tested. You can't just piecemeal different pieces of gear and just say because this test passed on this and this one passed on this. They have to test it together as a system. So they, recently, I just received word in the past couple of days that testing has been done. As far as, was your question a durability test?
No, I'm just concerned that we're trading the firefighters being exposed to these awful chemicals to, I'm not sure what the new ones are that are in the new gear.
Yeah, I can only offer my personal opinion on that. If I have a substance that's going to be against my skin when I'm sweating, and it's going to be giving something that I know potentially causes cancer, I'll go with option B, because we have some pretty strong evidence in increasingly these studies, and these studies are not just by the NFPA, they're by NIST, they're by the, some of the cancer organizations that are testing these gears. So we do not have any way to ensure that there's things in these gears that we won't eventually find toxic, but we know there's stuff in our current gear that is toxic.
Counselor Schultz?
Yeah, to the City Manager and to you, Mr. Mayor, I'm horrified to know that our firefighters are still being exposed to these forever chemicals, and I appreciate the fast tracking. My question is, is there any way for us to move even more quickly by suspending the rules, or are we bent by the law of waiting? Because I hate to continue the exposure if we can help it and stop that sooner.
Thank you, Counselor.
Your vote tonight is to approve the purchase of this equipment.
Perfect.
So if you decide to delay for whatever reason, then that would be, this council would be the one delaying the acquisition.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Mr. Kanter or Chief Chisholm?
I can, just a couple of comments. I know most of you know that I'm long-winded, so I will be brief, I promise you that.
Chief can kick you under the table.
I just want to, I mean, no doubt, as you guys are sensing the urgency of this, this is such important stuff, and I just wanted to share some brief information. At the rate that we're going with all of these chemicals, let alone in the gear, everything in the fire service for carcinogens, approximately 48.5% of firefighters will be diagnosed, not may be diagnosed, will be diagnosed over the course of their lifetime. In 2022, the International Agency for Research on Cancer, that's the agency that works with the World Health Organization, they determine what's the level of, this is a word, carcinogenicity of things, and they have reclassified our occupation from Group 2B, which was basically exposures were possibly carcinogenic, to Group 1, which is the highest level of carcinogenicity. Basically, it puts us in line with tobacco and benzines, so we need to get away from this stuff as soon as we can, as you guys know. 66% of line-of-duty deaths in the fire service from 2002 to 2019 were cancer-related. Last year, around July, the union had organized a health screening in regards to cancer, which went well. We hope to do more in the future, but just to share some of the results to show you that this does hit home, we had 72 participants go through that screening. Now, a few of the people that went through that screening were also either spouses or police officers, as we had a unique opportunity to open up the horizon, as this is something we're just trying to pilot here in Concord for our firefighters. But they came up with 51 actionable findings. Seven of those were high-risk findings that needed follow-up. And, as I promised that I'd be quick, in the fire service, it's very important us to always remember the following. We kind of take pride in that, to remember those that have served us, and I want to extend that to not those that just have passed on from cancer, but even retirees still today that live and have gone through this. I withhold all the information of the names, because it was hard to get all this information, but privacy is very important. But 37 people who have served this community in some capacity on the Fire Department have come down with cancer. Of that 15 have passed away. I'm sure that number's higher. We do have a limitation of obtaining information, as sometimes our contact information just expires as people move on, or maybe those that worked with us, we don't have the spouse's information, or some people are just not willing to share. With that, these are the different types of cancers that firefighters had. One blood, four brain, one cervical, one colon, one esophageal, two kidney, five lung, one mouth, one pancreatic, 12 prostate, five skin, one stomach, one testicular, and that doesn't add up, because either's had more than one form of cancer, or they just did not share that information as private. I appreciate you guys being the champion of this movement. This is so important. We ask you to protect the protectors of the city. I think by taking action on this, this is one example that you guys are doing that, so appreciate that. I'll answer any questions. Hopefully, that was brief.
Thank you. Gentlemen, thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's what we do every day. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the council, for the record, my name is Brian Rill, the President of the Professional Firefighters of New Hampshire. We have an office located at 6 Loudoun Road here in Concord. I'm speaking on behalf of the 2,000 active and retired firefighters throughout the Granite State. The Concord Fire Department represents our third-largest local. I rise tonight in support, obviously, of the resolution to appropriate this money for the purchase of PFAS-free structural firefighting gear. Research conducted by the National Institute for Occupational Safety and Health shows that firefighters have a 14% higher risk of dying from occupational cancer than the general population. In fact, occupational cancer recently surpassed heart attacks as the leading cause of line-of-duty deaths in the fire service. In 2019, more than 75% of the names added to the International Association of Firefighter Memorial were members who died from occupational cancer. I'm not going to bore you with the statistics of the gear itself. It sounds as though you have a pretty good grasp on that. The chief and Justin did a great job with that. Just to try and maybe help answer one of the earlier questions, some of the testing that has to get done by the NFPA, as well as NIST, when these gear manufacturers are manufacturing this gear, is the degradation test. They take this gear and they put it to tests under heat, light, water, oil, all of these different factors, and determine how best to have gear that can be repellent of all those things. That's where the PFAS came from. Back in the 70s and 80s, it was being added to our gear to begin with, and as time went on, we started to do, to look at the science behind this and realized that this was, in fact, a problem. Where we've struggled is to find gear that we can manage to manufacture that takes care of the water and oil repellent piece. They have since done that, which is why we're here before you tonight. This is still in its, it's going to be in its infancy, right, as a first-generation PFAS-free structural firefighting gear, but it is an opportunity for Concord and New Hampshire to take a huge progressive step in the right direction and set the tone for the rest of the country. We're members of the International Association of Firefighters, as is both of the Concord Fire Unions. We're represented by the IFF, who represent 340,000-plus firefighters across the United States and Canada. The IFF is working this on an international level. They have funded and supported additional research opportunities, developed partnerships with academic and research institutions. We've even hired our own chief medical officer to look further into this, and we've been lobbying the US Congress and the United States Senate to advocate for federal resources to combat this issue. This is a national epidemic, and I'm convinced that New Hampshire is going to lead the way on this issue. Since early 2000s, we've been fighting hard for, well, since the 80s, to be honest, fighting hard for cancer legislation, and in early 2000s, it started to, we started to make some headway. And in 2019, the legislature here in New Hampshire passed a law that recognized about a dozen cancers as being occupationally related for firefighters. We established presumptive workers' compensation legislation to cover those cancers for firefighters. And just last year, Senate Bill 71 was passed to expand that to include all cancers for firefighters. So now, may firefighter gets cancer, not if, when. It is presumed to be occupationally related due to the IARC coding that Justin was speaking of earlier. This is groundbreaking legislation. New Hampshire is one of the first states in the country to have legislation like this. And it's unfortunate that professional firefighters and the Concord firefighters could take zero time to celebrate the success of this legislation, because we have firefighters dying every single day throughout the country. And we have firefighters right here in New Hampshire that are finding out every single day that they have cancer. This is an issue that needs to be fixed today. This year, we're working on comprehensive cancer, early detection screening legislation. It's going to include $5 million in state funding to screen every firefighter in New Hampshire. It's a bipartisan piece of legislation that has passed overwhelmingly in the Senate and is on its way to the House, and we anticipate its overwhelming success there as well. In addition, we're championing legislation which would prohibit intentionally-treated PFAS uniforms, we call it station wear, and structural firefighting gear in firehouses across New Hampshire. We are no longer willing to accept the narrative that cancer in the fire service is an unavoidable byproduct of the job. The time to do something is now. We commend this council for looking at this issue closely, and we're confident that you make the best decision for the health and safety of your firefighters. Our firefighters deserve more than words of support. They deserve swift and decisive action. Supporting this resolution sends a clear and powerful message that the city of Concord protects those that protect Concord communities, and it's a message that will resonate throughout New Hampshire and throughout the country. I thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Rill? Thank you, Mr. Rill.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Welcome. Please state your name.
Chris Andrews. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, Counselor Keach, nice to see both of you again, counselors. My name is Chris Andrews. I retired from the City of Concord Fire Department in 2017. This is going to be a lot harder for me than I anticipated. One of the numbers that Justin had given you was mine. One of the numbers that was given to you was a partner, a coworker, a good friend, the best man at my wedding. He's currently fighting for his life with multiple system cancer issues. Please forgive me. As I mentioned, my name is Chris Andrews. I am a retired member of the Concord Fire Department. I am a cancer survivor, at least for now. It is often stated that once a cancer patient, always a cancer patient. Thus far, tests continue to come back negative for regrowth. I'm lucky. I retired in 2017, which, that was the end of my story with the city of Concord. My relationship with cancer started approximately 14 years ago. I was 40 years old, and trade publications, the IAFF, and other organizations, it started to realize a relationship between cancer and firefighting. Back in the day, it was thought, you know, the older folks, you know, breathing smoke and that stuff. I was lucky. I came into this job working with a lot of veterans. Started out without SCBA, without bunker pants. They wore the rubber boots. I've always known SCBA. I've always known bunker pants, the same bunker pants that we're trying to get rid of tonight. I had a, when I was 40 years old, I had a physical with my primary care physician. I was starting to become concerned with colon cancer. Talked to him about it. We talked about having a colonoscopy at that point. He thought I was crazy, 40 years old. That's not what the medical publications were discussing with colonoscopies. At any rate, I convinced him to let me have one. At that, they discovered precancerous tissue in the colon. Ever since, for 14 years, I now have a colonoscopy every few years. In 2021, during a routine physical exam, my son doctor, I had now been retired for a few years, knowing my history, knowing my profession, had ordered a PSA test, prostate blood protein. I was 51 years old. I didn't know that he ordered this test. He called me back a couple weeks later. He said, I want you to come back into the office. I want to see you. He told me that my PSA was elevated, and he was concerned. I was 51 years old, but he wasn't very concerned, but it was elevated for my age. He provided an exam in his room. The way we kind of left it was, you know, you're young, I think you're all set. I think it may just be an error in the test, and I didn't see anything on the exam. Seeing anything on exams is a wrong word, sorry. He suggested, however, that I consult with a urologist. Several months later, again, 2021, after COVID, the medical system was still reeling, so my appointment with my urologist was delayed a few months. Went to see him. He reviewed the results of the PSA exam. He still did an exam in the office. You know, he said, you're young. I think you're going to be all set. But when we started talking about my profession, he said, you know, I've got a couple of other firefighters that have come through there, about the same age as me. And he said, you know, I want you to consider a biopsy. That was probably the worst medical appointment I've ever had, certainly the most embarrassing. Two weeks later, he called me back to make a follow-up appointment, and he told me I had prostate cancer. At 51 years old, I found myself sobbing in the parking lot of Concord Hospital. I was angry at the world. I was angry, you know, it just, it really hit, really hit hard. I was provided multiple options. As a firefighter, we take multiple options. We quickly figure out what one is the best, and I decided to have my prostate removed. My prostate was removed in July of 2021. The results have affected me in ways that although, you know, they always go with the side effects and what possibly could happen when- when that type of surgery, but 51 years old, I didn't really consider it. But it has affected me in ways that I probably didn't imagine. And I have to live with it daily for the rest of my life. As a firefighter, as I mentioned before, I was part of a new generation, one that only knew SCBA and bunker pants. The veterans I worked with back in the day had mostly started in time of rubber boots and no SCBA. I felt somewhat invincible, not knowing that the gear that I was wearing was potentially causing long-term health problems. I'll never know what caused the cancer. There's no way to, there's no test that can say, yeah, it was PFAS. It was diesel exhaust. It was whatever. Just by the sheer nature that I was a firefighter, I was at a higher risk. The morning after my prostate surgery, my urologist came to see me, as expected. And he came and told me very, very bluntly. After he removed the prostate, he and a few other doctors were able to examine it. What didn't show up on the biopsy, if you're, if any of you are familiar with a biopsy, it's a very, it's a very localized exam. When they actually have the organ out, they can examine. He told me flat out, very, very bluntly. Had we not discovered this, mind you, it was somewhat of a mistake based on my doctor doing his due diligence, I would be dead by the age of 55. In no uncertain terms, he didn't sugarcoat it. He told me I was very, very lucky. Had I not had a good doctor, I may not be here tonight talking with you all folks. Again, I don't know if it was PFAS. It's only been less than probably five years that PFAS. I'm sure you folks as counselors are dealing in your water supplies. I don't think, you know, we never knew it. My exposure to cancer was always, you know, firefighting, the gear that had contaminants in it. You know, we've done a very good job of having two sets of gears, washers and dryers in the stations. I never would have guessed it was the chemicals in the gear itself. I'm urging you tonight as a council to support this initiative. And I sincerely hope that it's unanimous. Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Yes. Welcome. Please state your name.
Thank you. My name is Lisa Bowden. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I live in Ward Four. I just wanted to take a moment to put a face in front of you around the heroics and the work that firefighters do. In December of 2018, I was in a near fatal car crash where three of my limbs were catastrophically destroyed. And I needed to be med-vacked out. If not for the firefighters in a different location here in New Hampshire than Concord, I would not be sitting here in front of you today. One of the firefighters had to actually, he miraculously determined that I had a left femoral bleed. And had he not discovered that, I would have bled out. And he had to keep his fingers in my left thigh in order, so that we could wait for the helicopter to arrive. The fire chief later, when I went to meet with the firefighter several months later, said that firefighters see things that they can never unsee. And that there are times when firefighters and other emergency workers, they see things that can make or break new recruits. So we need to remember that firefighters run into burning buildings to save people they do not know and that they do not love. They do it because they are superheroes in front of us. And this, these, this new equipment represents capes. And we need to say, yes, you can have your new equipment. Thank you. Please let us know what else you need.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Thank you. Would anyone else like to testify on this resolution? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on Resolution 28-F. And I'll open, I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry. Please have a seat.
Hello. My name is Kate West. I live in Concord in Ward Nine. I, upon reading the resolution, if I am understanding correctly, the chief reported that in allocating this money, you will be replacing their primary set of gear, but not the secondary. And so that our firefighters will have to switch back and forth in some occasions between gear that does still have those toxic chemicals. So I am here to ask you to consider an amendment, if possible, where you will replace all of their gear because Plan A might not cause cancer. But I don't think we want Plan B or C or D to cause cancer either. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to testify? All right. Seeing none, I will, do I have one more? I'm sorry. Welcome. Please identify yourself.
My name is Fistamashimiya. I live in Concord, Ward One. And I'm here to support what Chief has presented. Basically, I think firefighters, the only department can be safe for all the community members in Concord. And that's my concept. I've had meetings with the staff, I would say the chief, many times. And he's the person that I usually talk to as a city employee, that I usually connect and understand. And someone who actually understands my concerns and the things that I talk about. And I think there's a way that I'm gonna be working with him to better our community. So again, supporting it because it's the only department that can work or keep safe the whole community in general than any other department. I would comment on other different departments. I feel, I feel we spend money to that we're not supposed to. But for now, I'll keep a short end. Thank you. I will take any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Riddle?
So.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Your Honor. You said you have been meeting with the chief. What have you guys been talking about? It's not tending to this specific topic, but I know about your care around diversity and diversifying all our agencies, if possible. Have you guys explored that opportunity? If so, in what lenses?
I'm an advocate for diversity, equity, inclusion, and justice. As I haven't been successful in working with the city council, I did a lot of things around outside that, you know, yes, I do have conversation with the chief of fire in terms of diversifying our community, making sure that our community is diverse in many ways. So we have a lot of community members that are new to this city. You can tell I'm not using the term "new American" because I don't think that's a term we should use to identify people. So as I'm saying, we have a lot of, some of the community members that are new to this city that might not understand the concept, you know, the system we have in this city. Maybe they're from other countries or maybe they're from other cities or towns that Concord is unique in many ways. I think my job is to make sure that those new people from different countries can understand, you know, the departments we have, how money is spent or our taxpayers' money, where taxpayers' money are going. And, and working with the chief, I think, I want those young people or people in general to find a path or to find some ways to learn how the firefighters work. So, you know, their needs and all those kind of things. And I think that in doing that and making sure that, you know, they keep our city safe, I think we need to keep them safe. So we can better serve our community. Thank you. I don't know if I answered your question. I was trying to apply in some other comments, but.
Just a follow-up. You did answer my question because you said, keep them safe so they can keep our community safe. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Any other testimony? All right. I'm going to close the public hearing on Item 28-F and open the public hearing on Item 28-G.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of $50,000 as a transfer in from trust in the Abbott Road-Sules Falls Road intersection project and authorizing the use of $50,000 in highway reserve funds for this purpose.
Thank you.
Members of the council, sorry, I know, movement here. The, so the capital budget for 2024 included $110,000 for intersection safety improvements to reconstruct and realign Abbott Road and Sules Falls Road intersection. So the city council approved that. Construction bids were received in December. And the low bid for the project is $157,027. The intersection improvements will be undertaken simultaneously with the city's annual highway improvement program. As you know, you also approved fixing Abbott Road. So in accordance with normal customary procedures, we had a neighborhood meeting. It was held in September. And the attach, you could see the conceptual design that was approved. And additionally, a new crosswalk will be installed in conjunction with the intersection improvements. And we recommend the city council authorize the installation of the improvements here and appropriate the additional dollars necessary to make this project happen, all together at once, along with the road.
Thank you, Mr. Rispel. Any questions for the city manager? Anyone in the, any members of the audience like to testify? Welcome back.
My name is Carl Sargent, and I live at 306 Portsmouth Street. And we have a major problem with engineering. The city engineer changed the corner between Old Loudon Road and Portsmouth Street. And the first time we did it, the buses couldn't get around it without backing out. Second time, he did it, but the thing he didn't do is he needed to shed the water off the road. It goes across the road right now. I've been almost killed three times. Three times. I had one, the first one happened, the first light snow we had, and it was glare ice on that side. And the person who came through accelerated, didn't, you know, get off the gas. And he missed, I got behind a pole. I didn't have enough time to get my driveway from my mailbox. The last time it happened, someone came down and they were really traveling, not only were they on the other side of the yellow line, the white line. I was at my mailbox. I had to pull in. Brushed the back of my jacket. It was so close. And he was going like mad. Another time, a city employee, he was a foreman. And they were trying to correct this water problem because it's a major headache there. And they had flags out in the cones on either side. And the next thing, this woman came through, and she missed us by inches. And I said, you know, I would get really upset about that. And he said, well, it happens, you know. I said, I wouldn't want it to happen in that. So I'm hoping that you'll put in the budget definitely to correct that major problem. And the engineer can't seem to figure out how to get rid of water, especially on the heights and that. And that's why we have so many road breakups and that, too. And that, I can go into a lot of other things. But that's what I, hoping they'll make appropriations to correct that as soon as they can. Any other questions for me?
Thank you, Mr. Sargent. Any questions for Mr. Sargent? All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to testify on Resolution 28-G? All right. I'm going to close the public hearing on Resolution, on Item 28-G and open the public hearing on Item 28-H. Adam Clark?
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of $42,000 in ERP needs analysis project for replacement of the city prosecutor's office software and authorizing the use of $42,000 in technology reserve funds for this purpose.
You ought to remember, the city council, we, as you know, we have a new city prosecutor who is ready, willing, able to take on this additional software, which is, or this new software, the software that we have is over 20 years old. So we'd really like to dramatically improve efficiency. We're essentially on all paper system. We'd like to work with the police, both the police department and the court system and replace that software. Now, we have a new prosecutor and many new assistant city prosecutors who are very capable of using this, while in the past, that wasn't the case. So we're ready to move, if I can put that nicely. So if, so I'd like to move forward with this now. Again, it's an ordering time, but they, every day that we wait, dramatically impacts their efficiency to move this. So this would be a great improvement for all the staff that are down there.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Any questions for the city manager, the council?
It's a quick one. I probably would have stated it in there, but it's not any sort of subscription, right? It's just a one-time purchasing of the software.
This, this would be, is it purchasing the software? I think there is an annual prescription going forward, but it's nothing, it's not, it's not, this isn't it, yeah. And you'll see that when we do the new budget, or when you see the budget, you'll see any costs like that will be allocated. So this is the new software.
Any other questions?
And I should just say, this is the software that's used essentially by everybody else, working courts, so.
All right. Anyone in the, in the audience like to testify on this item? All right. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on Item 28-H and open the public hearing on Item 28-I.
It's a resolution establishing a sidewalk reserve appropriating the sum of $22,023.18 in the general fund as a transfer out to trust and accepting the sum of $22,023.18 from Amiskag Beverages, Amiskag Realty LLC for this purpose.
Nothing to add, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Just accept the money and put it in the reserve for future sidewalks.
Thank you. Counselor Brown?
Yes, I just have a question. How that amount, how do we get to that amount? Because that seems like a really small number for a sidewalk, 22,000.
They have a very small section of right-of-way, frontage along the right-of-way down in this location.
Follow-up?
Follow-up.
So, so this amount is directly related, there is like a, an equation?
Is it, is it? Beth, why'd you? I don't know the equation, so.
Hi, thank you. So this was established during the plan for process. So the applicant determined what the, they provided a construction detail and came up with a cost estimate that engineering reviewed. So it's just for a section that's on their property. So it's a small amount because it's just a smaller section on their property.
Do, I'm, may I?
Yes, follow-up.
Is this, is there like an equation that the city follows to say, hey, we, you know, expect that you will pay X amount, you know, for so many feet of frontage?
We don't. We just use whatever the current construction costs are at the time of the application.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
May I ask you a question? Does my memory serve me correctly that this concept was created because we had projects where people were building, building projects on a street with no sidewalk, but they were required to build a sidewalk? And we figured if they, if it doesn't make any sense to have a sidewalk that goes from nowhere to nowhere in front of a building, maybe we should put some money in the bank so that when we actually build a sidewalk on that street, we'll have a reserve to pay for it?
That's correct, sir.
Thank you. I think I posed it from nowhere to nowhere. Would any, all right, any other questions on the city council? Would anyone in the audience like to testify on this item? Yes. Welcome back.
Hi. Once again, my name is Carolyn Skivoni. So.
Hi. Once again, my name is Carolyn Skivoni. So, the resolution and report before you indicate a request to establish a sidewalk reserve to collect fees being paid to the city in lieu of construction sidewalks, and that the planning board already amended its development permitting regulations to give applicants, applicants the ability to make payment in lieu of the construction of certain sidewalk segments. I admire the Concord Planning Board's ability to remain flexible and not just passively adhere to the status quo. It makes sense that when a standing regulation is not efficiently and equitably meeting the needs of the city, that the city will amend it. I'm heartened to know that this city council is both able and willing to make changes to the process by which it does business. With that in mind, I would like to highlight one counselor's response when asked about the passing of a resolution for a ceasefire in, between Israel and Palestine.
Would you please restrict your comments to the item before us?
Sure.
Thank you.
This counselor replied, we just haven't done anything like that before. So, we are asking you, as our representatives, once again, to demonstrate your willingness to defer from business as usual, because this item had never been done before. So, it is clear that we can do things that have never been done before.
Do you have comments directly related to the sidewalk reserve?
Just here to say that human rights are a municipal issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to testify? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing on item 28I and open the public hearing on item 28J. Madam Clark?
It's an ordinance amending the code of ordinances Title V Administrative Code, Chapter 30 Administrative Code, Article 30-3 Boards and Commissions, the Economic Development Advisory Committee.
Nothing to add.
Nothing to add. Any questions for the city manager or me? All right. Anyone in the audience would like to testify on this? Mr. Herschlag?
Good evening.
Welcome.
My name is Allen Herschlag. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the administration. It's nice to see you folks.
Yeah.
Couple of comments. I don't think anyone would find that unusual.
Just, just two would be unusual.
Go ahead. Well, thank you. Over the last 10 years or so, we have gone through a number of iterations to attract economic development to the city. This will be at least version three. I believe we all hope version three will be more successful than the previous attempts. The mayor making all appointments with the approval of the council and a close association with the chamber and our community, will there be a true representation of all sectors of Concord's economy? With the chamber and the mayor so intimately involved with appointments vetted by the chamber and the mayor, can we expect recommendations for EDAC to be truly independent? Or will they be reflective of the mayor's and chamber's agenda? Will the mayor request approval from the council to be a member of EDAC? And if so, will that limit the direction the commission takes, or, excuse me, the committee takes? Or should we have a committee that, while looking to build on attracting successful businesses and economic development to Concord, not be limited by preconceived ideas of who we should solicit and how we should brand our city? Shouldn't the committee be free to have an open discussion and bring forward recommendations with ideas and concepts that may limit the committees and the city's ability to attract economic development from quarters that may not have been considered in the past? So, I'm asking you tonight to consider a slightly different format, a format that has us not operating in a bubble or only working collaboratively with those who have already offered their opinions. The city already belongs to the New Hampshire Regional Planning Commission. Wouldn't a member of their staff be a great resource for ideas and data? Should we have one of our city-state representatives on the committee to act as a liaison with the state, the state house to help with bills and funding that will allow us to achieve our goals? And what about someone from Representative Custer's office? Should there be a representation from the New Hampshire Technical Institute? Many of their programs prepare their students for jobs that our city would welcome with open arms. Yet, their graduates leave Concord to take positions outside of our community because the opportunity for their employment is just not here. With continued turnovers in our planning department and the inability to move forward with updating our zoning going on seven years, how does zoning in our master plan intersect with the potential to attract new economic development? We should ensure that the new committee isn't operating in a vacuum and considers all the factors that are important for attracting economic development: traffic, infrastructure, safety services, recreational opportunities, zoning and code ordinances. Will EDAC be permitted to develop their own rules, independent of council approval, similar to all other committees, other than the Board of Ethics? I feel it's important to have as broad as possible a cross-section of representation from the many sectors that contribute to Concord's economy. And while we come to the table with our own ideas, it is important not to let our preconceptions shut out ideas that we may not have considered or in the past not fully understand, understood and dismissed. I urge you to take the time to ensure the composition of the committee is truly reflective of those who currently provide economic opportunities to our city. Help them continue to thrive and grow and find new opportunities that bring complementary economic opportunities to our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Herschlag. Does anyone have questions for Mr. Herschlag?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Could you just repeat those? You mentioned the state house rep, NHTI, Custer's office, who are the?
New Hampshire Regional Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Herschlag? Thank you, Mr. Herschlag. When you figure out what my agenda is, would you let me know so I know what I'm doing?
I think I'll let you muddle through that on your own. You don't, you don't need me to muddy the waters any more than they already are.
Thank you. It's good to see you.
Thank you.
Ms. West, did you want to testify?
Thank you.
Welcome, welcome back.
Thank you. Once again, my name is Kate West. I live in Concord in Ward Nine. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you once again. The ordinance report before you is a request from Mayor Byron Champlin to amend administrative code to include an economic advisory committee. Section B of the proposed ordinance states, "The appointees shall be residents of the city of Concord or shall have economic interests in the well-being of the city of Concord." The primary purpose of advisory committees is to represent the interests and concerns of the residents. By including non-residents relative to decisions regarding economic interests, this committee may lose sight of the needs and priorities of the local community. Residents want to have the primary voice in decisions affecting their city's economic future, and non-residents may not be as directly affected by those decisions. While non-residents may have economic interests in the city, their involvement on an advisory committee could present conflicts of interest. They may prioritize their economic gain over the well-being of the city's residents. This could lead to decisions that benefit non-residents at the expense of the local community. Members of an advisory committee that provide recommendations relative to the city's economic interests should be accountable to the voters who elect local officials. Including non-residents could undermine this accountability since they are not subject to the same electoral process. The proposal of this ordinance highlights a discrepancy in how our city officials view the relevance of non-resident interactions in different contexts. On one hand, there seems to be a reluctance to engage with matters such as urging our federal officials to protect non-residents by passing a resolution advocating for a ceasefire under the premise that it falls outside of Concord's jurisdiction. Yet, on the other hand, there is an endorsement of including non-residents who have their own municipal representatives to provide input to in the Economic Advisory Committee for the city of Concord. It is essential to maintain coherence in our stance regarding the relevance of non-resident affairs across various domains. Inconsistencies in this regard may undermine the integrity and effectiveness of our decision-making process. That being said, it seems that the mayor, notwithstanding the potential complications I mentioned earlier, holds the belief that the insights and viewpoints of both residents and non-residents can greatly enrich the discussions and decision-making processes within our city. This suggests that the mayor acknowledges we are not an isolated municipality disconnected from the broader world, and that embracing interactions with individuals beyond our city's borders can be beneficial overall. I agree with the mayor, which is why I am asking you to please honor our connection to the broader world by advocating to our federal officials to protect Palestinians' right to freedom and safety.
Ms. West, would you please restrict your remarks to the resolution before us?
Because we are a part of a global community, and our community is strongest when we remember that we are all responsible for protecting each other. Thank you for your time. Ceasefire now.
Anyone else like?
I just have a question.
Sure.
Actually.
For me?
No. Thank you. As a Ward Nine resident, I appreciate your time.
Before you ask, before we have questions, Counselor, I'm going to close the public hearing on item 28J. And so, we can move to public hearing action so that you can ask a question.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. When that, that item comes up, hold that thought.
I will. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not, not going to open public.
Your Honor, would you entertain a two-minute recess?
Yes. Would people like a two-minute recess? All right. Two-minute recess. Thank you. Now, we're going to move to public hearing action. I'm going to, I'm sorry, we're going to, yes, public hearing action, the action phase. And I will, we'll start with item number 29. Madam Clark?
It's a resolution adopting a community power program for electricity supply in Concord and authorizing the city to join the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire.
Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Second.
Second. Discussion. Counselor Horn?
I only had one thing. It actually came from a community member, and going back to communication, we've talked to about extensively. When we send out those letters, which I'm not sure if it's going to be the city or if we approve that, whomever is running it, I really want to be very clear to the people that they can opt down to save money, and not in legalese or tiny print, but you have the option to save money by doing this, if we're adopting the higher-cost one.
Okay. Second. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Curtis?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to be supporting this motion. In particular, I had met with one or two members of the Energy Commission several months ago when they first started looking at this, at this opportunity for the city and community power. And what I really appreciate is the vetting that this committee has done here. They've done all the hard work for us. They've answered all the questions that we have brought to them when we have seen their various reports and the iterations. They have spent so much time looking at the different options. You can't do anything but provide 100% confidence in what they've presented to us. This is exactly the type of community input that we like to see on all of our boards and committees. When there is something that's so important and valuable to the city of Concord, this is the type of effort that we appreciate, and I want the committee to know my appreciation of their hard work.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Brown and Counselor Kurtz.
Thank you. So, I also, I serve on the Energy and Environment Committee, and I can attest to the work, the effort that the committee members and those that spoke tonight have dedicated to this issue for years. And it's, I see that effort in the community when I receive letters from my constituents advocating for adopting this. So, obviously, I will be supporting this. And I want to thank my fellow colleagues on the committee for their dedication and hard work. And I'm looking forward to moving forward to achieving our energy goals together.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kurtz?
Thank you. I will also be supporting this measure in both because of the due diligence of the committee. I've asked a lot of questions over many months and have been very happy with the level of communication and response. Also, because it helps us achieve our energy goals and because it provides immediate savings to Concord residents. There are so many times when we feel we are making very difficult decisions where we are increasing costs, and this is an opportunity where we can immediately deliver some cost savings. So, I will be supporting. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else like to comment? Counselor Fantasy?
Thank you. So, I've asked a lot of questions. I've probably
Thank you. So I've asked a lot of questions. I've probably done more research on this than a lot of other things, because energy is not necessarily my forte. And so I just want to thank the various people that I've spoken with who've, I think, answered every question that I've, that I've asked. I think the, the reason I will be supporting this is to give residents another opportu, another option to obtain power. I think it's really important, though, that the communication that we provide out to residents, to let them know, as Counselor Horn alluded to, you know, the options they have, also the, the option not to participate if they so choose. I think we need to be very clear in the communication that they know exactly who to contact, and be clear about what this is and what it's not. I ask the question because I'm, I'm, some of the people I've talked to don't understand, oh, is it, are they going to be taking over the wires and the poles? No, 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 they're not. So I think this is just the starting point. I think it's going to be really important to continue to communicate with community members over the next few months so that they understand what's coming, particularly, you know, if they're, if they're doing net metering right now, that's probably not going to be an option. So this is not going to be the option that works best for them. But we need to, we need to do a really, really good job of communicating. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Todd?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. I just want to chime in on that as well, all the things that Counselor Fantasy suggested. And I'm really hoping that there will be actually a very robust educational component that goes with this. You know, there are other things, there are other questions that I think the community members are going to have about this, and so I think that's going to be a really important piece of getting the success of this and getting it off and rolling. So.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Counselor Sikum.
Thank you, Your Honor.
I'm sorry, they're pro temp.
I just want to add that people that don't speak English, and they really need to get, and it's just to second what other counselors said, to get the education they need, and of course, all the information they need to make an educated decision based on this, because they have an option to opt out or to opt in.
Any other comments? I'll just briefly say that I will be voting in favor of this resolution. As has already been stated, there was an immense amount of work that went into looking at these options, looking at community power, looking at the two supplier options. I was very proud and happy to have been a participant as a member of the Energy and Environment Advisory Committee, and also as a member of the subcommittee that looked at the options we had for community power. I think that it has been so thoroughly vetted. I would also say that the committee did a great job, and its leadership did a great job, in going out into the community and providing opportunities for people to come, sit, listen, ask questions, understand, and all of those meetings were taped by Concord TV and made available either on Concord TV's website or through YouTube. So I hope, as we move forward, and I know as we move forward, having listened to the comments by city councilors, there's going to be a very strong effort at communication and education among the ratepayers, so they understand what they're entitled to, how they can opt out if they need to, and how, which solution, which choice in power options suits them best. All right, I'll put this to a vote. All those in favor of the resolution as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The resolution passes unanimously. I'll now move on to action item number three. Madam Clerk.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of $880,000 in the Traffic Signals and Traffic Operations Improvements Project for the design and construction of traffic signal upgrades and associated improvements at the intersections of North State and Center Street, North Main, Washington, and Ferry Streets, authorizing the issuance of bonds and the notes in the sum of $880,000, and repurposing the sum of $101,221.97 from the State and Pleasant Street Intersection Subproject.
Thank you. Motion of approval?
Seconded.
Motion is made and seconded. Any comments? Any discussion? I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The resolution passes on the required two-thirds vote. Madam Clerk, item 31.
It was a public hearing regarding the status of the following: $750,000 in Public Facilities COVID Pandemic Grant Funds sub- donated to the Boys and Girls Club of Central New Hampshire, $500,000 in grant funds sub-granted to the Crisis Center of Central New Hampshire, and $500,000 in housing funds sub-granted to Concord Coalition to End Homelessness.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Sorry.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. The resolution passes. Madam Clerk, item 32.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of $561,074 in the new airport terminal building project for the design, permitting, and bidding of a new airport terminal building and accepting the sum of $365,754 in grant funds from the Federal Aviation Administration, the sum of $20,320 from the state of New Hampshire, and authorizing the issuance of bonds and notes in the sum of $175,000 for this purpose.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The resolution passes by the required two-thirds. Madam Clerk, that takes us to item thirty-
Thirty-three?
Thirty-three. Thank you.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of $5,792 in the airport fund as a transfer out to capital and authorizing the use of airport fund balance for this purpose, appropriating the sum of $115,830 in the new airport terminal building project for the design and permitting of a new parking lot and related improvements, accepting the sum of $104,246 in grant funds from the Federal Aviation Administration, accepting the sum of $5,792 from the state of New Hampshire, and accepting the sum of $5,792 as a transfer from the airport fund for this purpose.
Motion of approval?
Seconded.
Moved by Counselor Fantasy, seconded by?
Counselor Kurtz.
Jim. Counselor Kurtz.
Kurtz.
I'm sorry.
It was a fight.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the resol, of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The resolution passes by the required two-thirds. Madam Clerk, item 34.
It is a resolution appropriating the sum of $305,000 in the general fund as a transfer out to capital for the purchase of PFAS-free structural firefighting gear, authorizing the use of $305,000 in unassigned fund balance, and appropriating the sum of $305,000 in the Fire Department Personal Protective Equipment Project for this purpose.
Move approval.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Counselor Kurtz?
I will be supporting this measure for all of the reasons that were shared so passionately by those who spoke. I don't want to hold this up to night, so I just will ask that we revisit how we might get them a replacement of their set, set, their backup set in the near future.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Grady Sexton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be enthusiastically supporting this resolution. I also wanted to note that the Public Safety Advisory Board also had a unanimous support for this, for appropriating these funds, for, for this effort. I think we ask our firefighters to put their lives on the line every day, and we shouldn't also be asking them to subject themselves to known carcinogenic materials on, on their gear. I think that this is, I hope that, to see unanimous support on, on this. And I also wanted to thank retired firefighter Chris Andrews for sharing his story. I think that's going to sit with me for a while, and I just want to thank the entire Concord Fire Department for all they do.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Schultz?
That was very well said. I don't think I could have said it better. I just wanted to also say thank you to Lisa Bowden. She didn't have to be here on this topic, and she speaks eloquently of so many folks who have received the benefit of our, our public service heroes, and I'm honored to support this also.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Mister Speed, discuss?
I'll say that I am enthusiastically voting for this as well. As the city manager indicated when he came to me with this proposal from the chief, I jumped on it. I think those were your words. Firefighters are in my family. They didn't have to deal with the issues of PFAS. I do have a brother who's a former firefighter in the military who is also struggling with cancer because of the exposure to PFAS and the firefighting foam that he used. So this is a matter that's very close to my heart. I would like to say that the city plan right now is to get our firefighters into their primary gear right away, and then to start to rotate out the second set of gear, the older set of gear, so that we will reach PFAS-free fire turnout gear for our firefighters in a, in an expeditious manner. So I'll put it to the vote. All those in favor of the resolution as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously by the required two-thirds majority. Madam City Clerk, item number 35.
It is a resolution appropriating the sum of $50,000 as a transfer in from the, from trust in the Abbott Road-Sules Falls Road intersection project and authorizing the use of $50,000 in highway reserve funds for this purpose.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Seconded.
Motion moved and seconded. Discussion. Counselor Kretavec.
Thank you, Your Honor. There's a lot that's happening in this area with the Abbott Estates redevelopment project, as well as this road project at the same time. I'm supporting this measure. There is also input in our report with regards to a public hearing for the neighborhood and the adjacent neighbors. This conceptual drawing is not the final drawing, and I think that that's the message I want to impress upon the neighbors that are going to be following up and getting information about this. The way the turn radius works with the reconfiguration of this intersection, it's going to shine headlights directly into the front window of one of the local residents, and that causes great concern. Secondarily, where the crosswalk is located here is also directly across the street from the front window of this resident. They've never had this kind, kind of intrusiveness, is their word, to it. And so I've been assured by our city engineer and our community development department, our city manager, that this is an ongoing conversation with the residents that are there. We need to move this project forward. This is a dangerous intersection that people fly through all the time. We have an opportunity to correct it. It's been in discussion for several years. We need to move forward, but we're needing, moving forward with concern, empathy, and understanding for this very sensitive neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion? Very well, I'll put this to, put all those in favor of the motion as made, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The resol, excuse me.
Preparation.
Thank you. The motion passes by the required two-thirds majority. I'm sorry, my mouth feels like cotton tonight. Madam Clerk, item number 36.
It is a resolution appropriating the sum of $42,000 in the ERP Needs Analysis Project for replacement of the city prosecutor's office software, and authorizing the use of $40,000, $42,000 in technology reserve funds for this purpose.
Do we have a motion?
Approval. Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Thank you. Any discussion? Counselor Keach?
I just want to thank the city manager for hiring staff that is competent with software now.
Given the opportunity. If I could, if I could follow.
Yes.
Counselor Horn brought up the question about the annual fee. This will actually allow us to reduce the cost for the annual fee associated with the, because the cost for this, annual fee for this software is less than what we're actually paying now. So, so you'll see that reflected in the budget go, coming forward.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome. Counselor Fantasy?
Would you believe that our former city solicitor said this was a very key thing we should do before he departed his post?
And we missed the timing, didn't we?
As soon as he was gone.
That question. The Kavanaugh motion. All right, I'll put this to a vote. All those in favor of the motion as made and seconded, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution passes by the required two-thirds majority. Madam City Clerk, item 37.
It is a resolution establishing a sidewalk reserve appropriating the sum of $22,023.18 in the general fund as a transfer out to trust and accepting the sum of $22,023.18 from Amisec Beverages LLC for this purpose.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the, excuse me, all those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. The motion passes by the required two-thirds majority. Madam City Clerk, number 38.
It is an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, Title V Administrative Code, Chapter 30 Administrative Code, Article 30-3, Boards and Commissions for the Economic Development Advisory Committee.
Move approval. Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Counselor Brown?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I just have a question. Will there be any kind of way to measure the success of this committee? You know, is there a goal, a benchmark that we're trying to achieve?
I envision that this committee will frame, you know, frame its, its, its goals as it meets. I'm not imposing upon it, you know, a set of goals. I want to bring in expertise and then set them loose, and kind of like Oppenheimer, get a team, a good team together, and then motivate them not, not to create the.
Cause we need an Oscar.
Different end results, though.
But definitely, definitely to win, to win the Oscar.
The Oscar.
Yeah. Counselor Schultz?
Well, I was just going to say, I thought that Mr. Herschel brought up some interesting points. I think that those could be factored in as these choices are being made. I also just wanted to add a sort of footnote, in my own opinion, and that is what I, it's easy to support the local chamber, for the most part, for me, but I do have a problem with the state chamber and how hard they lobby against the economic interests of the average person, including their lobbying against raising the minimum wage, which is still stuck at 7.25 an hour, and New Hampshire doesn't have one. So I get that this isn't in any way enabling that, but I have a real moral issue with that that I wanted to add a footnote to.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments? Counselor Fantasy?
I trust that the mayor will be considering all of the various stakeholders in the community who might have various input for the Economic Development Advisory Committee. So I look forward to you presenting a slate of individuals.
Thank you. Counselor Keach?
I'll just add, I think it's, all due respect, Counselor Brown, I think it's backwards to go into it with expectations. I think gathering a broad group of people from different directions will have the most benefit outcome and represent multiple interests.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kretavec?
Thanks, Your Honor. I, I also just wanted to add the thought about a non-resident being on this board. Ultimately, it is us as city councilors that approve the recommendations that come to us for this board. But historically, there are people that own businesses in this city that are not necessarily property owners as in residents, but they may be property owners as in business owners, and they have been considered non-resident but property owners. And I assume that that's what you meant, because that is how it's been worded previously as well.
Thank you, Counselor.
You're welcome.
Counselor, second.
Thank you, Your Honor, and I'm going to support this because I think, as I said many times, Concord is a destination. I lived in Laconia, and I saw what happened there. And I think in Concord, as the capital city of New Hampshire, we have a lot of work to do, and this hopefully will bring that to life, where we will make Concord as a destination to increase our economy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Parton. Is the council ready for the vote? All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Reports?
The first item is a report from the General Services Director regarding a screw pump lower bearing replacement.
I'd like a little screw pump discussion.
That's right.
At this time of night.
What a way to wind up the evening, huh? Justice, I've been waiting for you all night. I bet. Well, the, the senior members of the council may remember back in September, I was at this desk with Pickle, and I think I, we've got some good news relative to the Pickle. I'd like to report that back to you. But in brief, we have three Archimedes screw pumps that are the headworks of our Hall Street. Street wastewater treatment plant, which basically lift wastewater that's down a well that's probably 30 feet deep up to the surface. And they're pretty cool from an engineering standpoint, because they've been around since the third century B.C. So just because it's new doesn't mean we go out and buy them. But despite that, they do wear out, and one of our screw pumps and other three gave up the ghost, and we said, okay, we've got money already appropriated for that. Let's get that moving real quick, because we're now down to two. And then about five months after that, wouldn't you know, another screw pump started to show some problems. While it was operable, we weren't very confident as to how long it'd be operable. So we were before this body in September, seeking $600,000 withdrawal from our fund reserves to go out and rent a pump immediately so that the wastewater would remain out of the river should that problem screw pump decide to give up and start working towards replacing it. And as the project developed and working with our staff, staff came forward and said, you know, this is big, but we think we can handle this and do some of the work in-house. I mean, they had done smaller projects in-house, but this was probably the biggest I can think of in the 22 years I've been with you. And they were successful, and their names are listed in the report that you have, and they saved the community ratepayers about $800,000. I've been here 22 years, and I can't-- and I was talking to Tom. I can't remember a department head ever coming forward and saying, or anyone, say, hey, we saved some money, and this, in my view, was a home run for the folks down at Hall Street. They were here earlier tonight, but they all have young children, and the young children trumped the council. I'm sorry to say.
Couldn't punish him any longer.
Any questions for Mr. Chesley? Oh, I'm sorry.
Not a question, but can you just pass along our thanks? That's-- I know when this came up this fall, the people who were sitting around this table were very concerned about the potential impact and the concern about the last one failing. And so for people to step up and perform this and go above and beyond is fantastic.
It was their Apollo 13 moment.
Do we have a motion to accept the report?
So moved.
All right. Need to second it? Discussion? I want to add my thanks to Counsel Fantasy's, and I know the thanks of all the city council for this excellent work by our General Services. Counselor Slosser.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So could we send a note to those folks who have to leave early and just of appreciation? Or to this team or something? I don't know how we express our appreciation, but a note or something would be quite--
Send them the tape.
And make them watch.
Very much.
Unless they want to watch the video of our remarks.
Yeah. Have they received commendations? I think they've received commendations.
And I've provided them with a financial reward on your behalf.
Thank you. Excellent. Those in favor of the motions as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam City Clerk, next item.
It is City Council 2024, 2025 Priorities Report from the City Manager. You did receive a revised report this afternoon.
Do we have a motion?
Move to accept the report.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the city priorities, which we talked about an awful lot a week ago? Counsel Brown.
Your Honor, do you just want to discuss the changes?
Certainly. I had a conversation with Counsel Kretovic, who presented kind of a long slate of suggestions, and we discussed where her suggestions overlapped with the priorities presented by the mayor, and we identified what the-- which priorities were of importance to her, and we modified the priorities in order to include those. Include those, excuse me.
There were two.
There were two. There were two, yeah.
We added specifically to diversity, equity, inclusion, justice, and belonging implementation to prevent racism and discrimination in our community as one item that was not on the original list. And the secondary, do you see that under--
On-page organization.
Under-- yes, organizational, my apologies, the third bullet down.
Okay.
There was an update just before we got here to the council.
All right, so then I just don't have an update here.
And then the second one was the bullet for transportation and utility infrastructure. We added a system of systems.
Any other discussion before we vote? All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. The motion is adopted. This brings us to items from the consent calendar. I pulled item number 23, a report from the transportation engineer on behalf of T-PAC. I would like to refer that back to T-PAC. The individual who brought this forward to us wasn't aware that T-PAC was meeting feels that he would like to present to T-PAC, so I'd like it to go back. I also would like to refer this to the Public Safety Committee, because a part of his concerns deals with the security of his place of business. All right? Counsel Brown.
May I--
I'm sorry. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to accept.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Counsel Brown.
Yes, so I serve on T-PAC, and I was actually really impressed with the due diligence done by the staff on this topic. So I would actually say that even if it went back, it wouldn't change, and I do want to show, this is a graph that our traffic engineer, Karen Hill, produced, and they looked at nine different possible places for the bus, and, you know, you were able to see clearly that the safest, best location is actually where it is. We also heard from Teri Page, who's the head of the public transportation unit, and she stated that a lot of the people the person referenced were actually coming from Pennacook. So it was a Pennacook bus line that they were, you know, getting-- stopping and getting off at. So I know that he had stated, and I have his original comments, where he was talking about, let's see, he said there was verbal abuse, trespass, littering, loitering. There wasn't any kind of accompanying reports supporting that information. So, you know, based on the hard work by the city staff to really examine this location, it really is in the best spot. And one of the suggestions I had made, because, you know, the buses were stopping outside of his law firm, was that it's an opportunity for advertising. You know, he could wrap the bus with advertising for his organization. We didn't see, you know, there was no report supporting the loitering or the trespassing, the vandalism, nothing like that. The people who use that bus line are using the Pennacook route.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Kretovic.
Thanks, Your Honor. I'm going to be supporting your recommendation and Counselor Todd's motion to send this back to T-PAC as well as to the Public Safety Committee. I think it's important that when a member of the public says, I didn't know this was going to be on the agenda, and I wanted to speak to it, that we invite him back to speak to it before we make a decision without his input, despite what he submitted in a letter. He is asking respectfully for this committee to look at it again, and it does no harm whatsoever since the bus stop is not moving today anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Todd.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, Counsel Kretovic pretty much spoke for me. Basically, in a nutshell, it's, you know, some from the public didn't really have an opportunity to speak to this particular item. So while I don't disagree with what Counsel Brown said, that's the reason that I'm going to be supporting this. Also, for the record, I would like to hopefully improve upon my motion, which is basically just to accept the report. I move to accept the report and also to refer this item back to T-PAC and Public Safety Committee. Did you second that?
Thank you.
Someone did.
Someone did. If you were seconded, you could second that addition.
Thank you. Counselor Keach.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll also be supporting that motion. I think while T-PAC did good work in their due diligence, it was considered in the context of T-PAC. This is a public safety issue. This is a mess down there. It goes to public safety issues throughout the city that I think need to be addressed. I think calling them the nuisance crimes are probably an understatement. It goes to quality of life issues that have been neglected for some time, in my opinion. And I say that very carefully, because I don't want anyone to think that holding people accountable in any way is a lack of compassion. It's just the opposite. And I can tell you from the perspective of businesses up and down Main Street, they're hitting a tipping point, and it needs to be addressed. So it needs to go to public safety. It's not a transportation issue. It's more so a public safety issue.
All right. Thank you.
May I make--
Counsel Brown.
Thank you, Your Honor. May I make an amendment that this issue be sent to Public Safety to look at the safety issue of it and not look at it as a way to move the bus stop? That we examine if there truly is a criminal element or something dangerous, there is safety issues in that area, that we do focus on that, but I do not believe it needs to go back to T-PAC to move the bus.
Do you?
An amendment to--
You're making a motion to amend--
Your motion.
It's not my motion, it's--
Or Counselor Todd's. Counselor Todd's motion that it--
I'll amend it to only direct this to--
Public safety.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Seconded by Counselor Foote. Would you like to-- either of you like to speak to your motion and second?
No, I think everyone made some valid points. I was at that meeting as well, and the committee spent considerable time over that. As Counsel Brown said, Engineer Hill came up with a nice matrix and really identified the best location for it. And-- but I also understand that if Mr. Pollock wasn't advised of the meeting, then he should have that opportunity, but I think it should be narrowed, as Counsel Brown said.
Thank you. Counselor Todd.
Thank you, Your Honor. The only piece of this I see that's missing without referring it back to T-PAC is, in fact, the spreadsheet that Counsel Brown held up. I don't think that Mr. Pollock has had a chance to see that or review it, and I would imagine that if he did, he might have some questions. So I do think it's still appropriate to actually send this back to both committees.
Thank you, Counsel Todd. Madam City Clerk-- Oh, sorry, was there another?
Sorry, Your Honor, just one more point. It also might be of help to go back to T-PAC, because that intersection is getting re-signalized as well, and there was a suggestion tonight that perhaps one of those lights should be eliminated, so it might be part of the same discussion.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. All right. Madam City Clerk, could you please read the motion which is before us, which is the motion to amend?
Counselor Brown moved to accept the report and refer it to the Public Safety Board, not to T-PAC.
Thank you. Does everyone understand the motion before us?
Yes.
All right. All those in favor of the motion before us, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No.
No.
The noes have it. I'm now going to put to vote the original motion, which made by Counselor Todd, which was to re-- I'm sorry, and I'll ask the city clerk to read it.
Counselor Todd moved to accept the report and refer the report back to T-PAC as well as referring it to the Public Safety Board.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just very quickly, I wanted to say that I do think that it is appropriate to send this to the Public Safety Advisory Board. At our last meeting, we discussed the possibility of bringing in business owners and those working in downtown in the Heights area to talk about public safety impacts on small businesses, large businesses alike, so.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the-- excuse me, of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you. Suspense item number one.
Do you first need a motion?
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry.
Motion to take this item up on suspense.
Thank you. Made and seconded. All those in favor of taking this item up on suspense, excuse me, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The vote passes on the required two-thirds vote.
So the suspense one is a report from the city manager regarding fiscal year 2024 event funding.
Mr. City Manager.
It's just a consent report. I just wanted, I promise I keep you up to date. We've still got several months to go. I just wanted you to be aware of the requests that were received and the awards that have been made.
All right. Any comments or questions?
Motion to approve, sir.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Is there--
Counsel Brown.
Thank you, Your Honor. Is there more information about--
Okay, there we go. There's a page two.
Yeah. With links to the ones that are actually half their things that they want to do.
Counselor Todd.
Just a quick thank you to the city manager for reporting this out. It's good to know what's happening.
And I'll give you more as I get it.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Again, this is one-time dollars, so.
Yep. A lot of great events, I would mention.
A lot of new things.
A lot of new things. There's a new Fall Festival coming in, and the Coffee Festival, and all sorts of stuff that we've been able to jumpstart.
Right.
All right. I'll put the motion to a vote. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Madam Clerk, suspense item number two. Oh, I'm sorry. I need a motion.
I make a motion to remove the second item from suspense as well.
Seconded. Thank you. Moved and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it.
The next item is a resolution to be set for an April 8 public hearing. It's a resolution that would appropriate the sum of $66,190 for city overtime payments to cover shifts when earned leave is used in using fund balance in the amount of $66,190 for this purpose.
Move or approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I would note that this is to schedule it for public hearing, so come for the public. Any discussion? All those in favor of the resolution as-- or the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. The resolution is adopted. Thank you. Now, we may not have to make a motion to extend beyond 11 o'clock.
Give you a 12-minute warning.
I've given you a 12-minute warning by the city council rule. If we go beyond 11, I have to take a motion. We have to vote in favor of extending the meeting. So comments, requests by city councilors. I'll start with Counselor Todd.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to go fast. It's just my great pleasure to announce that the-- there will be a groundbreaking ceremony for the Canal Street Riverfront Park on Wednesday, April 3, at 10:30 a.m. So we're going to break ground on the new park, and you can stay and enjoy that. I hope you'll come out and celebrate this great beginning. We also have a great ending that we're going to be celebrating as well, because right after that, at 11 a.m., there will be a ribbon cutting for the Phase 2 of Pennacook Landing Apartments, the affordable housing apartments. That'll be at 11, so hope to see some folks out there for those. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Kretovic.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll be brief.
Apartments, the affordable housing apartments. That'll be at 11, so hope to see some folks out there for those. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Kretovic.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll be brief. The driving range is open at Beaver Meadow. If you didn't get an email, it's because the email is down. It's coming, but we hope that either it snows and we can go cross-country skiing, or the course opens. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Brown.
Thank you. I just want to talk about, very briefly, transparency, conservation, and community. I just want to say that I appreciate the transparency that our council shows, and I think it's a good thing for residents to ask questions of their elected officials at all levels. I think that's important. And I would like to talk about the conservation, how exciting it was that we just approved Community Power Coalition. Next week is a way you can also conserve by saving water. It will be Fix a Leak Week. This is also.
My favorite week.
It is Women's History Month, and I just want to recognize Marjorie Swope, who was a former Ward 5 City Councilor, conservationist, environmentalist, and civic leader. And there is going to be a Garrison Pool meeting at the Beaver Meadow School next week as well, 6 to 7. Date is to be determined.
Thank you, Counsel. Counselor Kurt.
Thank you. I'd like to share a joint statement from Counselor and Mayor Protam Ali Sekou, a member of the Muslim faith, and myself, a member of the Jewish faith. We wrote this together, and I'm sharing it on our joint behalf. We are writing this to join millions of people around the United States and the world to stand for long-lasting peace for Palestinians and Israelis. We are united in our commitment to the citizens of Concord whom we were elected to represent. We condemn intolerance, discrimination, hatred, and violence in all forms. We will work tirelessly to keep Concord a community where all peace-loving individuals feel safe, welcome, and valued. Hate has no home here in Concord. In the face of great tragedies internationally, we hold firm to our desire to foster relationships and conversations within Concord that help all residents thrive with a sense of safety and belonging. To all residents of Concord, we ask you to look out for one another, care for each other as neighbors, and please do not hesitate to report any form of hate or discrimination. We share our collective prayers for all those in need of healing, and most urgently, for a meaningful and lasting peace in the Middle East and across the globe. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
Here it is.
Counsel Kurt?
Counsel Schultz, I'm sorry. I wasn't going to say this, but since I'm next up, I'll just say I agree wholeheartedly with this. Awkward transition to a different topic. I did send a, an email to Madam Clerk to forward to the council, and the mayor has actually received a separate email when it came out. The New Hampshire Fiscal Policy Institute came out with a study by Phil Sletton, who's amazing, about the tax burdens being the worst for those of low income, be it paid through rent or through the fact, as I am beating the drum again about our horrible minimum wage, as a state representative, we tried to pass a minimum wage for New Hampshire two weeks ago, and again, it went down in flames, unfortunately. But this report, I think, we all feel the responsibility of the tax burden of our neighbors, and I think this is an important thing to read and be aware of.
Thank you, Counselor. I'm sorry, Counselor Mayor Protam seconded.
Thank you, Your Honor, and I want just to take this opportunity to say it was such an honor to work with Counselor Kurt on this statement, because I think it's needed, long-lasting peace, peace agreement. It's not, as we all said earlier, people are saying in my community, not, we are human, and this is a humanity-related crisis. We are people of faith, we care about life, and life, all lives. So it was such an honor. Thank you. Appreciate the time you invested to meet and connect and do this, and I got a lot of support, in a sense that people think this was a great letter. People were even asking me if we are going to vote on this. I said no. But anybody, feel free to join us. We are, we are sharing this for a long-lasting peace in the Middle East, but around the world. Our world is on fire, and we have that responsibility. We all have kids. People that are stating, based on their politics, should take politics out of this and make it human life. Thank you, but I have something to say.
Okay.
Honorable Mayor and the City Council, thank you for your time. I just want to say that Ramadan started. This is the first day of Ramadan, and Ramadan is a month where Muslims fast for the entire month with no water, no food, no smoke, from sunset to sunrise. Today, I fasted for 13 hours, and that's why I left earlier to go break my fast and pray and come back. So it's such an honor to be with this council and to see that people support all backgrounds and support all religion and all faith. So thank you. And I'm asking all of you guys, because this is the month, one of the most important months where charity, peace, care is really cultivated at all time. So please, take your time to connect with your neighbor, your coworkers, who, your friends, family that fast, so that you can learn about this great holiday. At the end of Ramadan, we have what we call Eid, and Eid al-Fitr will be celebrated at the, at the last day of the fasting. So please, reach out to me if you have any question. If you want to come visit the masjid, the mosque, feel free. It's open to everybody. Ramadan Mubarak, Ramadan Karim, Happy Ramadan, and thank you to all the councilors that reach out to me to wish me Happy Ramadan. Appreciate it, and it's an honor to work with all of you guys here.
Thank you.
Two quick things. And I still have to go, too. So there's a couple of events that are coming up in the next couple of weeks. Wanted to let everybody know that there are still a few solar eclipse classes left at the library. I will be in there tomorrow morning, and then, going along with peace, I wish everybody that celebrates Easter a Happy Easter. So, thank you.
Thank you.
That leaves me. Well, I wasn't going to say this, but if we're talking about Ramadan, if we're talking about Easter, I want to wish Counselor Kurt a happy Passover.
Oh, thank you.
I'm not sure of the timing this year, but I'll try to hit all the bases. I've been asked to promote Concord Reads, which runs from March through May. It's a collaboration between the Concord Public Library Foundation and the Concord Public Library. It is a free program. If you want to go out and get a copy of the book that they're reading this year, which is Unlikely Animals by Anne Hartnett, you can either go to the library and get a free copy that you can borrow, or you can go to one of our local bookstores and purchase a copy. I highly recommend that rather than getting it on Amazon.
Yes.
Buy local. So this is a great event. It is basically a community book club, where everybody reads the book, and they have community discussions. So I highly recommend this. Mr. City Manager.
So the following up on Counselor Brown's comments about Garrison Park Pool, the meeting is actually, will be on Tuesday, March 19, at 6 o'clock. I'll have, put that out in my newsletter when I do the newsletter on Friday, so just so you know. And that leaves minutes to spare, and I recommend you adjourn.
Funny that you say that, because Mayor Protam Sekou moves. Counselor Kurt seconded.
I had to, indeed.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
There we go. Well done.
Thank you.